Are we live? Okay. It is 5:30. I'll call our City Council Committee and Work Session together, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Riesman, Nomination's Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we have a Senior Citizen Advisory Board vacancy on Place Five. Joanna Lay has resigned of 1123. We have a nominee tonight, Rhea Marr, who is asking to fill that vacancy. And Rhea, if you could come up and to the podium, please. Rhea, would you state your name, your address, and why you'd like to be on the Citizens Senior Board?
Rhea Marr, 1739 Bull Elk Drive, Stevensville, Texas. And I want to be on the Senior Council because I go there all the time. And I would like to see our senior citizen center become an active center instead of as complacent as it is.
Thank you. Anyone on the Nomination's Committee like to ask any other questions?
No, sir. Good.
So, can I ask for, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Ms. Rhea Marr for Place Five on the Senior Citizens Advisory Board.
Motion's second. See if you've got all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. You'll be brought before the council in March seven.
Thank you, Rhea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that all, Mr. Riesman?
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Durfee.
Sorry. We have a Main Street update. Were you going to give the update, or is, oh, Juba's gonna give us an update?
Good evening. We'll go to the first slide. We have four committees that we work from. The first one is the Design Committee, and Rita Cook is here. She's our chairperson, as well as the chairman of our advisory board. And we have an update on the lighting. The manufacturing team said that the end of April will be the date that we're shooting for, for the new lighting downtown. This date might be impacted by possible filming in the downtown area, so, but they're looking at late April for that. So, we're super excited about the new lighting and the new banners and the new signage for downtown. The next committee is Economic Vitality. Our new board members have new roles in the chair position. So, Marion Cullis, our new chair for Economic Vitality. And the newest business downtown is Curran and Kay. Their downtown headquarters will be downtown, but they will be manufacturing high-end Christmas ornaments out of Stevensville. So, we're excited about them coming to town. It's a local girl, Carol Boucher, and she's come back home to manufacture these beautiful ornaments. So, we're happy to have her and have her headquarters downtown. We also have the construction projects that are going on downtown, that y'all are well aware of. The Wyatt, a mixed-use property, has retail and residential, as well as the Scott Allen Project. And then the Crow Opera House is another exciting project that they're working on, restoring that beautiful building and hopefully bringing it back to its splendor of the past. For organization, we have Jocelyn Perez. She is our new chair for organization. She started working on this even before we assigned her this committee, and she helped bring the partnership between the county and the city. And the inmates have already been working on a schedule to clean up downtown, and we surely appreciate that. We'll also explore the possibility of a local marker project. Historic markers are pretty pricey these days. And so, we want to look at the historic entities around the square that celebrate the small age in history. Either buildings that, for whatever reason, don't qualify for a marker, but we still have a story to tell. And we'll look at different buildings and the possibility of having either signage or some QR code that brings up the building and what it's looked at, looked like in the past, and maybe a little history about the building. So, we'll be working with the Eret County Historical Commission to see about putting that together. And then we heard from Downtown Strategies earlier today. They had an exciting five-year strategic plan that they presented. And this is a great partnership for downtown because they reinforce the areas of concentration for Main Streets, working through the Main Street USA program. And we look forward to working with the implementation stage on that. That will be next, and that's a great partnership that we have. And then Dr. Amy Schaus from Tarleton is head of our Promotions Committee. And one of the things we talked with her about last week is a great event that's coming in a year from now, which is the Great American Eclipse. And we are in the path of totality, which, this is the last eclipse for 20 years that will be in North America. So, the first sightings of this eclipse will happen in Texas, and it will go all the way up through Maine. And DFW being one of the airports for international travelers and domestic travelers, we're hoping to pull some of those visitors, hopefully downtown, and come up with some events all over Stevensville. I'm working with tourism, and we've come up with some great ideas for viewing this eclipse. But we expect a lot of people to want to come see the Cowboy Capital, and we've got some great ideas planned. Everybody in the United States will see at least a partial eclipse, but just that path through the United States will be what we'll see, what's called totality. So, I think Stevensville's a great destination to come, either the few days before or a few days after. And we will probably be in totality about 2 minutes 22 seconds just outside of Stevensville. Stevensville will be 1 minute and 12 seconds. But Stevensville's interesting because we have a planetarium and an observatory, and we have a lot to offer. So, that's really, really exciting. And we're hoping to start a committee and plan for downtown and all over Stevensville for ideas. Also in promotion, I'd like to introduce to y'all our new social media intern. Ciara is working to record the meetings, and she's already hit the ground running. And we had a spotlight on businesses and Valentine's promotion. And we went from zero followers on our new Instagram page to over 200 with that promotion. So, we're really excited about Ciara and all that she can do. She's started a downtown Then and Now, which has old historic photos of what buildings used to look like and what they are now. And we did one last week on the library that used to be the post office. So, if y'all aren't already, please follow the Instagram page for Stevensville Main Street. The last thing I want to mention, one of the things that the Texas Historic Commission worked with us on is the Texas Treasurer Business Award. And it celebrates legacy businesses that have been in business for over 50 years. And we submitted Brunner's back in the summer, and they received their certification. And we didn't receive it till around Thanksgiving, so we were looking for the right time to present it. So, we will be presenting Greg Brunner with his state award at the Legislative Day in Austin on March 1st at the Capitol. And then at the next city council meeting, he will be receiving recognition here as well. So, I believe most of y'all will be in Austin for that, and it's an exciting tribute to his business and their legacy here in Stevensville. So, if y'all have any questions.
Is there a timeline on the Wyatt?
On the Wyatt?
We're still working with the developer on that.
So, no.
Any other questions? Thank y'all so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we also have, Michaela's gonna come up. We've had an application for hot funds. The Larry Joe Taylor Music Festival, it's one of our budget items, but we've had an application for more. So, Michaela.
Hello, everyone. So, as Leanne mentioned, it is a line item in the budget for 10,000. They have applied this year for 15,000, and it would be to fund the shuttles that would go from the festival to the surrounding, the city's hotels, and also the bed and breakfast and the triple L lodging establishments as well. Last year, there is a shuttle report attached as well, if you have had a chance to look over that. Last year, on Wednesday and Thursday, they did a total of 98 transports. On Friday and Saturday, they did a total of 280. They are requesting 15,000 to help fund the four shuttles and also pay the drivers as well. So, for the shuttle rentals, they are estimating a total of $6,800 for the week for four drivers. They will pay them 450 a day, averaging 10 hours a day for a total of 7,200, including cost of fuel, which would also be amount of about $1,600. Meals and lodging for drivers as well for about $600, and then 120 for hotel displays, and 100 and 150 for social media ads as well. So, they will be using this money for marketing, for the shuttles, and for lodging meals for drivers, fuel, promotional materials. Yes. Do you have any questions?
Well, I meant to look back on my pictures from last year. The shuttles actually had City of Stevensville Tourism. I mean, like, we had, there was signage on the shuttles for us. So, that's 280 trips of our signage going all over.
And they said that they've already had inquiries about shuttles this year, too. So, word is getting out, and they predict that they will be used even more this year as well.
Yeah. 10,000's budgeted for this, correct?
Yes. It is a line item in the budget at 10,000 right now. And there is already, in the undesignated funds as well, there's 10,000 there. So, we could pull from that to do the complete 15,000 if it's approved.
So, if we only approve 10,000, they're gonna pony up the other 5,000, something like that?
Potentially. With previous discussions, they said it probably wouldn't be as doable without our help with the 15,000.
Do you have the, just so we put it out there, the number of visitors, people that are attending the LJT Festival?
She put it on our.
It's pretty close to 60,000.
Yes. She put it on the application at 45,000.
Yeah, but it was higher than that.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
60,000, of which 90% of them are from out of town. Right. One, pretty good size.
Yes. Yes.
I hear some locals go, too.
I've heard that. I don't know anything about that.
It's all being recorded this year, David.
Some locals drive shuttles around the campground.
I think in the past, we've talked about this being a safety issue, too, have we not? And being able to move people back and forth in a safe manner, correct?
Yes. So, the shuttles would help with that significantly.
All right.
I would like to make the motion that we give them, so.
A second.
Oh, sorry. Do I need to finish what I was gonna say?
You do need to go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say. All those in favor?
Aye.
What was the, I'm sorry, what was the dollar amount?
15,000.
All opposed. And the guys have it, and we'll send that on to council. Thank you, Michaela.
Fantastic. Finest committee. Well, he's not here yet.
He called me and asked if I would, told him if he's able to bargain on that.
Well, Mr. McClintock, let's get after it.
He, he went down and went to a basketball game tonight.
Everybody calling, asking, what's the score?
No, he was going to his first ever, his kids' first ever varsity playoff game. So, that's a good, that's a good place to be. Cool. So, my part in this is gonna be very simple, because I'm gonna ask Ms. Monica to come up and talk to us about two items.
Don't feel bad, because Justin does the same thing.
Oh, okay. There are two items on the agenda, write-offs and utility accounts and solid waste collection. So, Ms. Monica.
Thank you. So, we have some utility accounts that date back pretty far. And this is just some house cleaning to take care of and stuff. There was a little over half a million dollars in accounts that we consider bad debt. These accounts, their last bill dates are from like 1997, by the way, well before I ever started working here, to 2014. Huh?
That's something like qualifier.
Well, you know, it's just a long time ago. So, they haven't had any activity at all in over eight years. So, what we do for our receivables and our utility accounts, we have to determine how many of those are uncollectible. And so, obviously, the ones that are more recent, a higher percentage of those are collectible. And then when you get older and out, they become more and more uncollectible. These particular accounts, we're showing them as 100% uncollectible on our balance sheet. So, when you look at our utilities receivable and then the allowance for doubtful accounts, 100% of them are in there. So, as far as our balance sheet goes, this really doesn't have an impact. It would just reduce the receivable and reduce the allowance for doubtful accounts. It doesn't really make these accounts go away for good. We just take them off the general ledger accounts. And we can still see them in the system. So, if, you know, somebody should come back that lived here in 1997 and didn't pay their bill, and they try to start an account, we would look. And as long as their social security number and everything was on that account, we could, you know, make them pay that before they get their service started. So, it doesn't necessarily mean we're never gonna get it. But I can tell you, with these accounts, last year, between last year's balance and this year, we received a whole $85.10. So, I think it's well time for us to take care of this. I just need your approval to do so.
So, anybody have questions for Monica on this?
I do. So, I think you answered part of it. So, these names still stay?
Yes.
Okay. And so, if they theoretically should be flagged, if they come, do come back, they would still be responsible for paying that?
Yes. Some of the accounts are so old that. Yes, some of the accounts are so old that at the time, the city was not requiring driver's licenses or social securities cards to start the accounts. So there's no way to really, you know, tie those out. But yeah.
And the only reason I ask is I had a lot of downtime this weekend. Scrolled through there. Quite a few people there that I know have current city, current water accounts, so. So, and I, you know, that may be an old process that didn't catch that, so.
Well, if, depending on when they had it, if it didn't have their, their social, there's really not a legal way for to say, yes, that was you. So that those, they could have been missed that way. But yeah, they still show up and if they try to move or whatever, we'll pick them up when they give us their social.
I made it to about a hundred and eighty pages and was like, oh, this is.
And we do send our accounts to collection. So after, after they haven't paid with, it's off their final bill within ninety-two hundred and eighty days, we send them off to a collection company and then they start doing the phone calls and the letters and those kind of things. And they reported on their credit. It just, you know, sometimes it just doesn't get collected.
How much do we typically have to pay for a collection agency? How much of the collection, if they collect something, how much did they get to keep and?
The rate varies depending on how old and the amount that they sell.
They're in nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and eight.
Yes, but it's still, it starts out at twenty-nine point nine percent and then goes up to thirty-nine point nine percent that we have to pay the collection company.
Okay, and that's for the ones that they collect?
That's for the ones they collect.
Are they not interested in collecting these old ones?
Typically not. I mean, when they get really, really old, the cost of, and, you know, you looked at some of the dollar amounts in there, you know, some of them are fairly small because we do require a deposit. And then, you know, we apply that and then whatever's left is what gets collected on. So, you know, the cost of, you know, they get, you know, up to forty percent of how much they collect. And so if it's a hundred dollars, they get forty bucks. And when you look at the skip, tracking costs and the postage and sending out the letters and that kind of stuff, you know, there's a cost benefit to that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Monica?
Pleasure of the committee.
I'd like the motion that we approve the, how do you need that worded, Monica? The write-off of uncollectible utility accounts as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? We're gonna move on to vote. This will go with a positive recommendation to the council. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those both same signs, so that will move forward with a positive recommendation. And Ms. Monica. He said you would address the second one or do you want it?
I'll take it.
Okay, Jason's gonna take it.
She's like, huh?
Bless your heart.
Monica and her staff had some calls after the recent ice storm. Good portion, all of our residential customers went about twelve days, eleven to twelve days, that Waste Connections wasn't able to do pickups because of the way the ice storm fell and the scheduling worked. And so they were taking some phone calls asking if we were going to mitigate some of the monthly costs because of that. And so we decided to have a discussion with you guys about that.
So my opinion is that if this was an act of God, it's not avoidable by Waste Connections. At the end of the day, did the trash all get picked up? It did. Nobody had to haul their own trash to the landfill in Weatherford, or I guess it was to Weatherford, right? So, you know, things can happen that are entirely out of everyone's control and takes some extra time to get everything done. But the service was ultimately provided and I believe that is adequate. And I thank Waste Connections for staying on top of that and keeping citizens informed the best you could and evaluating that. And most importantly, keeping your drivers safe and keeping the other drivers who were on the road safe by not putting your trucks out there, so.
So we a hundred percent back on schedule now?
Yes, sir.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
One of the things that we've done, that Waste Connections has done that others haven't, we've maintained a two-day, two times a week pickup. That I have another location that you can't get that for what we're getting paid now. So I think we're, I wish we had had better service that during that time period. I think you'll probably work on that next time. But I think we're getting a pretty good deal right now.
Is there any discussion of maybe you guys putting, or Waste Connection putting receptacles around town? Has there been any discussion along those lines?
So I've spoken to Greg about, you know, doing some pre-planning for, you know, events like that in the, in the future. Just because Mother Nature's given us all some surprises over the last few years. And so how do we, how do we mitigate that?
Yeah, I mean, typically, we don't have ice storms in Texas until the last five years. And so it seems like it's happening at a quicker pace nowadays. The problem is, is when we were able to get out and start picking up trash, we focused on the restaurants. Because after five days, I don't know if you're like me, I just wanted to get that guy out of my house and go get some food somewhere else that was leftovers. And so with that, we found out that after five days of doing this, it took everybody that we had to reload those dumpsters so we could dump them. So we used everybody on residential, everybody. They all attacked the dumpsters. Now, one of the things that we talked about, and I haven't had a chance to share this with you, Jason, but we're actually working on getting our helpers, CDLs. And that starts from a couple of different problems, right? The labor shortages, the CDL shortages, the drivers, all of those things. But it also helps us better prepare for future turnover or major ice storms like this. Where one of the big problems that we had this year was it impacted almost the entire state of Texas. And so typically, if we're talking about, you know, like a tornado like Jaxborough had a couple of years ago, we were able to send ten trucks from all different districts up there to help clean it up real quick. But the problem is, is when everybody shuts down like we did for those five days, it was a nightmare. And we even tried to get out on Friday and one of our competitors did. Ended up rolling a truck over and everybody's fine, thank God. But it's just one of those things that kinda slaps you in the face, you know, when you realize what happens and what could happen in North Texas now. To where we didn't ever really see this problem before in the past. So we've gotta react a little better, prepared for the things that we weren't prepared for and continue to learn from this. And so I will say this, the guys worked their tails off. They worked thirteen hours a day all last week trying to get the trash picked up. And it was, it was a lot. And so with that, I just wanna say I'm sorry that we were unable to do it. We tried to throw everything we could at it. And I think we've been prepared because we have a lot more drivers now. And with backup, you know, just having a CDL is nice to have on your team, so. And I'm glad to answer any questions you guys might have because.
Maybe we get a little more consideration in our golf tournament and help it raise money downtown.
That I can't help with, but.
He might be able to.
No, I mean, for real, any question you're asked, it definitely sparks some thoughts and maybe some ideas come from it. Because ice in Texas don't mix, you know? And so if we can figure out something else, yeah, I don't know if receptacles around town would do much. Because a lot of times you get a lot of illegal dumping that goes on with those unless you have them manned. Just because people don't wanna pay the trash bill outside the county, you know, outside the city. Sometimes you get people bringing stuff in from outside and that can be a nightmare.
I'm kidding. I got a couple of phone calls that week and like the mayor said, I told him, you know, you realize that there's towns all around us that are only getting picked up one time a week? And you are lucky enough to be picked up twice a week, so let's just be thankful. And that kinda made most people take pause and be like, what, only once a week? Who only gets, it's like, make some phone calls, look around. There's a lot of places that are only getting picked up once a week. So I appreciate that y'all kept your drivers safe. That's the most important.
That's the only thing that matters to us, you know, is these people are responsible for them. And so sometimes making a tough call is making a tough call. But I think we made the right one on that one.
Me too.
Anything further? Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Mayor here ends, the Finance Committee.
Mr. McClintock, I'll give it right back to you.
Now we're gonna hear from Mr. Williams. He's got stuff.
Y'all was good prepared.
Yes, sir. Okay, well, following along that same topic, once a year, we typically meet and talk about our solid waste collection rates. This year, we've been petitioned again by Waste Connections that operates our exclusive franchise agreement. A little bit about the agreement. It was last updated in twenty eighteen and it does expire at the end of this year, so December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. There haven't been any rating, I'm sorry, there were no rate increases from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty. However, they did raise the rates by one point three three percent in twenty twenty-one. And then again, significantly last year, seven point seven six percent. In addition to that, we did modify the fuel surcharge table that was outdated. So those are the things that we did last year. You've got some things in your packet here. It's their request letter. You've also got a memo from me and some backup calculations that show what their request is. This year, they're requesting a twofold increase, one being six point nine two percent of the CPI. And that's based directly off of a table, similar to what we do with our wastewater treatment plant contract. The other side of that is an increase in disposal costs. And there's a letter from the landfill that shows that they're going up and then how they calculated that, two point three nine percent. Overall, they're asking for nine point three one percent. That's a lot. And last year was a lot. If we look at that spread over the last nine years, it really only evens out to about two point zero four percent. I will say that typically, I would try to negotiate with these guys before I come before the committee. But there are two things that we did talk about. One is the disposal rate at the landfill. Last time we went up on our rates, we also went up on the disposal costs at our landfill. So our type four landfill, which as you know, is going through some, some growth and we're going to petition the state there. Those rates will go up from sixty-four, sixty-six a ton up to seventy, sixty-eight per ton if this is approved. Based upon that increase in the average volume that Waste Connections brings in, it looks like about sixteen thousand six forty-five is what we should expect in increased revenue just from that account. The second part of this that we discussed, Waste Connections and myself, was that our wastewater treatment plant budget was just approved. And so I don't wanna go up on our sludge hauling rate because those rates tend to go up as well. So they've agreed to delay the increase on our wastewater treatment plant sludge hauling until October when our new budget would be set. If this request is approved to go up, that means that each residential container would go up. I wanna make sure I say this right. A dollar nineteen per month for residential totes and a dollar ninety-three per month for commercial totes. And the rest of the figures are attached in the memo as well. Happy to answer any questions you have about their proposed increase. And they're also here to answer questions if you have some.
Okay, so why didn't you do your usual negotiations this year?
I asked for the request to come as it was. And I was also told there, it is what it is, was what I got back.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
Well, it's a, it's a petition and so we always have the opportunity to do that. But the way that the contract is written, really, there's, it's not written the same way that our wastewater treatment plant contract is written, where it says negotiate or default to the CPI. This one is petition to increase by the CPI. So city manager's right, typically, when they propose it, there's not a way to argue. So I do that behind the scenes before it gets to you.
So I know it's probably in here and maybe I'm just, have missed it. How long is, will this contract be good for, for this, for this race in the process?
So their contract expires at the end of this year, so December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And that's, so we'll likely be hearing from these folks again this year to talk about a renewal, if that's something you wanna pursue.
I can say I pay for trash pickup in exactly the same size dumpster, or roll off, I guess you call it. And I get one a week in another location out of the house and I pay almost twice that much for once a week.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions for Nick? Not what is the pleasure of the committee?
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the increases presented.
Second.
The motion is second on the floor to approve the increase. Any further discussion? Very none. Proceed, alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those both same sign. So that will move to the council with a positive recommendation. Thank you, guys. So. Nick, I'm gonna take this next one for just a second, certainly invite you and Jason to chime in here. And then we're gonna come back to the second part of it.
Yes, sir.
So as most of you are probably aware, several months ago, there were some concerns, questions brought forward about the length of time it was taking to get proposed development plans reviewed, specifically through Public Works on the engineering side. And so as a result of that, there have been several meetings held about ways that maybe we could positively impact that and take some of those delays out and bottlenecks out. Jason, Nick, myself and members from, guys from Freeze Nichols attended those meetings. And what started out as a pretty simple conversation about how can we eliminate some bottlenecks has blossomed into much more than that. And so what I wanted to do here tonight was introduce a part of that to you guys 'cause I want everybody to be on the same page from the very beginning. Because there's gonna be a lot more, I think, coming forward from the meetings that are being held. So specifically, the questions are about stormwater. So we've kicked around some ideas. Nick's gonna tell you about one here in a minute. We've kicked around some other ideas, but it looks like there's going to have to be some policy changes to affect some of these other changes down the road. And of course, we're entering into a period where we're fixing to start up on the comp plan. This is the perfect time to try to incorporate some of this stuff into the, into the conversation. But at the last meeting, one of the questions that came up, and this is where I'm soliciting input from committee and other council members, one of the questions that came up was this overarching idea of whose responsibility is stormwater? So, and so I'm just gonna give you my two cents worth and you can take it for what it's worth. And again, I'm soliciting input. But my two cents is that the developer's responsibility for, for stormwater is, regardless of the, the size of the development, if a river's full of water is gonna come off that property and enter a public roadway, that's a public safety issue. And that developer should have to do something, some way to slow that water flow down before it enters the, the public roadway. But to me, with stormwater, it's way bigger than a single developer. It's way bigger than a single development. And in my mind, the only entity that's really capable or equipped to handle that, that big of a problem is, is a governing entity. So to me, the governing entity is the one thing that's big enough to look at the problem globally and identify existing problem areas and future problem areas as development continues. It's the only entity big enough to, for the planning, put planning together to address both those existing issues and future issues. And probably most importantly, it's the only entity big enough to come up and create a funding mechanism. a funding mechanism to address the extraordinarily large capital outlays that are required in stormwater infrastructure. I think, Nick, you threw out a number of 50 million, 53 million is what we're sitting on today. And so in, in my mind, before we can kick around some of the other ideas that we've talked about, I, I think we all need to, at least, we don't have to be on the same sentence, but we need to be somewhere on the same page about who really addresses stormwater. And, and so that's what I'm doing here, that's what this is about, is simply, I'm soliciting y'all's input from committee and council. If you have questions, if you have comments, concerns, if you talk to people and they have questions or comments, get them to Jason, to Nick, or myself. We want to try to incorporate all of that into future conversations along these lines. I think right now, it's a little premature to talk about some of the solutions we've been kicking on, but Nick does have one solution that is a good one, and I want him...
Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
When you say the 53 million, is that what needs to be done to bring them up, or is that 53 million, like, what is that for?
That was what was identified in our capital improvement projects list that FNI put together for us.
So that's today.
Today.
That's today.
Of things that need to be changed, or things coming, coming up?
Those are specific projects that have been identified. And they're short-term, intermediate, long-term projects.
Sorry, I didn't scroll down.
It's okay.
My fault.
But as far as the review process goes, every one of these is a different animal, and so it's really been good that we went to an independent third party to have these reviewed, because reviewing stormwater is, it's not black and white all the time, and so there's always room for discussion and development and new ideas, and sometimes developers, engineers have great ideas on how to make this, you know, how to make it better, and having FNI on board and their group that deals specifically with stormwater has been a great benefit to us, because they are experts in their field as well. And while we can be, well, we just cover everything, so it's hard to be an expert in anything. I will say this, though, one of the things that we're looking at, not just a simple checklist, but one of the things that developers do is sometimes they'll, they'll skip something, or they won't put a particular chart, or an outflow, or some easy things like that. And so we want to put together a checklist that these engineers sign off on, and says, yes, I've supplied all these different things. Now, the real key to this is a spreadsheet that we would work on independently, not independently, but interdepartmentally, so that if we can provide a spreadsheet for developers, engineers to input their impervious area, their runoff factors, all these different things, and it calculates it automatically, that gives us the exact place to look for outflows, it makes it easier to review, we know exactly where to go, it shows the developers exactly what tables to put on, and so that's something that we want to try as a policy, and see if that helps the process a little bit more efficient. And it's not uncommon, there are some other communities that have done this in the past as well, and do it today.
So as it turns out, if there's 100 engineers, there's 100 different ways to come up with numbers, is the way I heard it.
Or 200, yes, sir.
Oh, okay. And this is simply an effort to streamline, and so that everybody's playing with the same numbers from the get-go. Jason, do you have anything you want to add from the meetings the other day?
Well, there's, I think you're right, I think there's a lot more to add, but I think you're also right by starting, let's start with policy implications first.
Okay.
And see where everybody kind of feels, so I think maybe next month, let's come back to discuss a little further.
Okay.
And that gives everybody some time to marinate on that, and then we'll broaden it from there.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, it sounds, from the conversations that I've heard, it sounds like, you know, we're on the right path. If everybody's using the same numbers to begin with, I think that'll alleviate some pain. But would it be fair to say, Nick, that if we had had better processes, or had managed our stormwater better over the last 40 years?
Sure, 60.
We wouldn't have $53 million in improvements that needed to happen, correct?
Sure.
I mean, when I look at some of the areas that these are in, these are generally old parts, older parts of town for the most part, before the city was managing stormwater, probably. So, so it's very vital that we get it right as best we can. Otherwise, we're just giving somebody in the future a bigger, bigger headache, so.
Yeah, when the, it'd be very logical to make this a part of our comprehensive planning process, it's going to consider land use development, so future development, as well as the layout on the thoroughfares and, and just overall comprehensive planning.
Yes, sir.
For the community, and that this be a part of that process. Now, that process is going to end up taking 12 to 14 months, or something like that, to do that, but this didn't happen overnight either, so, you know. And I would think that that needs to be incorporated in it along with, you know, what, what you're doing with, with the staff and, and meeting together with engineers to, they've got to provide that input overall to whoever does our comprehensive plan, our consulting group. Two. And what may be looking for, we may be looking for a, you know, to address those things that are immediate, you know, that come up. I think we have policies in place right now on retention and detention, I guess I should say, and all that kind of stuff for new development, but it's the old stuff that's getting us right now, correct?
It's some of both. I mean, it's, the, certainly when the regulations that are in place today were not in place, I mean, there were developments that didn't put any kind of detention in, and so they'll take a, a lot that's completely bare and make it 90% impervious, and so then you have this impact that runs off. Well, if there's nothing around them, nobody really complains. But when you have development, specifically development that's in our older downtown areas, and they take lots that are single-family residential and they make them multifamily residential, well, that, that makes a little impact. Then you have that issue where that happens several times in a row, so now you have this compounding impact, and so those are some of the things that we want to address.
An old story, but I remember many years ago, a, a city official in Stephenville, in talking to someone from out of town with regard to stormwater, taking care of stormwater, after the question came up, you know, I don't, I don't see any underground lines, there's nothing that takes care of the storm, and the response was, well, we don't really need that, because the streets take, take care of it, and we have, we're so hilly that it runs off so quickly that we, we don't really need stormwater runoff, I mean, detention or anything like that. Well, as what you run into, and, and that's not exactly true. It's like what we have found in the past of, of putting buildings on top of sewer lines and things like that, that was done in the past too, it's not exactly correct. And so, but to address it and address it the right way, I think is what this council wants to do.
Yes, sir.
So I think you're on the right path.
What we have to do is, we have to prevent the tragedies like we have on Spring Creek Bay.
Yep.
For example, you got a 25-foot drop, there's a, there's your hill issue.
Yes.
And you had houses halfway down, spring bouquet, had two or three feet of water in their garages.
That's right.
You're in a, under here flood, and so we've got to prevent that kind of stuff from happening. At the same time, we don't want to run off development. So it's gonna be a fine line that you have to walk to do that.
Before he leaves, since back up on the previous island, would you let him, could we ask him to give us a little update on the landfill, since you mentioned that?
Absolutely.
You better ask Randy about that.
Well, he's down there. Look at him, he's got that...
It's okay, he can talk.
There you go. Talk.
Very good. So I did mention the landfill a little bit earlier. Just so happens, myself and our engineering consultant and our landfill superintendent, we're headed to Austin tomorrow morning to give our first presentation to TCEQ on our first draft for the landfill. We feel very hopeful that it'll be a receptive presentation.
I just want everybody to know that that is a, if, if we get that approved, what is it gonna save the city's tune over the next 20 years?
Millions upon millions.
Tens and, tens of millions of dollars. So thank you for getting that done.
Well, we're working on, very hard on it, yes, sir.
No more questions, some?
Significant.
That ends the Public Works Committee, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Development Services Committee is up next, and I think all of our members, with the exception of Justin, is here. We have three things and, and one staff report here that we put on here for just general discussion. One of those is, is something that has come up within the last few weeks, and, but overall, it's not just one issue. It is taken into consideration, because we're going into a process soon, in fact, it'll be before the council in March, and that is the selection of, of a firm to do the, to begin the process of our comprehensive plan. But within that comprehensive plan, what kind of process do we need to go through in, in making recommendations to the, to this group with regard to specific land use, commercial versus residential? We know that we've got a real need for residential, but what we seem to be having at times is, is residential, perhaps being targeted at high-traffic, major thoroughfare areas within the community. We saw one issue like that here within the last couple of weeks. So I was asked if we could put this on the agenda just for discussion purposes, and I'd like to hear your thoughts about it.
Okay, well, I got thoughts.
Yes, go for it.
So, I actually talked to a couple of people about this, and one of the questions that, that I had was, is there any way that we could put teeth in either the existing land use map where it regards commercial properties, or in the future land use map where it regards commercial, commercially zoned properties? Because at the meeting that you were talking about, on that particular one, a very prime piece of property on a major thoroughfare that moved from commercial to residential, but in, in going back and, and before making that decision, my, my usual way of making those decisions, there was nothing that, that I could use, that I could fall back on to deny that, even though every fiber in my being wanted to deny that request. But every argument that I made ultimately ran back into this idea of tax revenue. Every argument to deny, if you chased it, it ran back to tax revenue, which we, we don't use tax revenue, either the loss or gain, to justify rezones. And so the question was, is there anything we can do that would give another option to the members of the council to fall back on that wouldn't rely on that tax revenue argument? So my thinking on it, and I've told everybody, I don't, this probably isn't legal, but it's, the idea was that if you established along the major thoroughfares, you establish corridors, and within that corridor, any piece of property that was, that was listed as commercial, that was actually zoned as commercial, put the onus on the developer that's bringing forward the request to rezone that, to demonstrate enormous, substantial benefit to the entire community of Stephenville by allowing that to rezone to something other than commercial. So that would be, the fallback position would be, well, I just didn't see the substantial evidence that, to, to allow that rezone to go through. And so I, I don't know if the establishment of those corridors, if that's a, if that's a thing or not, but if not, can you just say that all commercial properties, you have to show a substantial positive impact for everyone before that, in, in order to have it rezoned from commercial to, to anything else, especially residential? And then the other question was, is there a way to take out the language that's in the justification part of the rezone decision that says can't use tax, tax revenue? So those were my three, those were my three thoughts.
Good thoughts, good thoughts.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Sorry. I sat on the Future Land Use Committee like 2012. Have, have we updated the future land use since 2012?
David, it's, it's coming up, and it's gonna be a part of the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
David, I think Jeremy did it when he was here.
Jeremy did it.
Yeah, it was like, it was 2017. I don't know, it was...
No, I, yeah, it was too, it was about 2017, 2018, because I was on it too.
It seemed like a long, a lot longer than that.
It was kind of not really comprehensive, it was really kind of haphazard.
But he still did the process of having the ad hoc committee that was...
He did.
It brought the community members in, so...
Yep.
And, and it seems to me that if you're going through that process, because it, it, there are multiple steps to change that, and it seems to me that there should be a way to, to put some bite behind that, because it is a multiple-step process to get to a change.
I would think there would be too.
So one of the things we were talking about, I mean, you, we can add whatever to that language, but kind of the, the road you're going down still is, leaves it to each council member's personal interpretation of what is the highest and best use of the land, and leaves it open to their discretion to vote however they want to.
If you put hard and fast rules in there, you're boxing yourself in, and what you're supposed to be deciding on, on zoning use, highest, highest of best use, this is the way we've always looked at it, so I've never looked at it in a different way, but I just, I just had that thought when you were...
But if you, if you come through with a really comprehensive land use plan in the community, says, you know, down, let's pick a road, down Northwest Loop is, should be commercial on both sides, or something like that, you know?
Well, and I...
I mean...
I would...
How, how do you then go around that? I mean, you're giving direction to planning and zoning.
Of course, both of you are serving on, on Steve's committee right now, scoring those, those RFQs that you're gonna talk about here in a minute. I'd encourage you, as we start that process and even interview some of those folks, there's all kinds of different, different ways to look at this now, and, and I would encourage all of us to do that as we move through this process, and, and maybe one of the other systems that's out there works better for us than kind of the traditional zoning use, future land use, you know, whether that's a unified code, or I know Bastrop got real out of the box on, on how they looked at their land use and changed it all for the city. So I think maybe in some of the process that we're fixing to go through, as you guys dig through those companies and maybe talk to them, that it's just time for us to look at this in a whole new way and, and start over in how we want the community to develop from this point forward. Does that make sense? Okay.
Yeah, my fault. Though, I agree, that bothered me, I, I agree with Mark. When I got home that night, I kind of, I'm not gonna, something bothered me about it, about changing some of the commercial to, to residential. But one thing I think we have to think about as we go in the community is that if we're gonna want corporate to come in, we can't eat up all the prime spaces for corporate to come in, or... to come in, or they're not going to come in. We have to be careful how much we're going to get.
Yeah, I know that the term is controlling a lot, highest and best use, and who really should be deciding that?
That's, that's my point.
That's the point. And see, and I know where your, your tendency is, or this is from what I'm hearing you say tonight, and to me, the landowner knows what that is, the developers, though. Now, one of the things we've done in the past, has been done in the past, is when a new piece of property is annexed in the city, it goes R1, because it's, it's the highest, you know, it's the most restrictive, and then we ask to back off of that, you know, once people want to develop and stuff. But for me to tell a person who is spending two or $3 million on a piece of property, and going to spend another $15, $25 million on a development, well, we're just not going to let you do that because of what we think's the best interest to him in Texas. Well, best interest to him in Texas is his investing in the city, irrespective of the tax collections. I just have a concern about government telling an owner of a piece of property, what you can, can't do it. Now, obviously, there's certain, you don't want to have a liquor store next to, you know, elementary school, et cetera, some restrictions like that, but when it comes to, I have a 20-acre, or 30-acre, or 40-acre, in that case, it was what, 13 acres, I think, was what they were insuring. So, 13 acres, and what's sitting right next to it? Kind of sit behind it, back to it, behind it a little bit. And so, I don't know. I understand the need for uniformity and to create some structure in the city. I just have struggles with a person who has millions of dollars invested, or $100,000 invested in a piece of property, and we're telling them, well, we're just not going to let you do that here. If it's, if it's a bad business type, okay, I'm all right with that. But if it, when it really comes to investment, how are you going to tell somebody, you know, you spent that money, and we just don't think it's the right thing to do with that, with your property? You know, there's some restrictions, like I can't build a store in front of my house. There's some things like that, but I mean, I just don't think it's right that we tell businesses or developers, you can't, unless it's, unless it's a real significant impact on the city. Just my opinion. And, you know, I know that's not consistent with what a lot of cities are doing, you know? Well, that's where I want to go.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else?
Not on your committee, but I, so I think the struggle there is, so, one of the key things that I know Mark uses, and most of us use, when we're trying to make these decisions, is, did anybody show up to speak against it?
Mm-hmm.
And there wasn't a single one. But in a lot of these, and I don't remember what that particular one was, but in a lot of these cases, there might only be one or two landowners that get the notification, because of the size of the tract, or the size of the tracts around it.
That's true.
And, and, you know, the, the citizens as a whole may not really like the idea of having that, that type of development right there. We don't have a way to notify them if they're not watching our public notices every week. So, I don't have a solution to that, but that's the challenge, is, is there's a lot of these that don't, there's not a lot of notice that goes out, there's not a lot of people immediately, you know, within the 200-foot buffer, that is, that is going to generate 20 people showing up telling us, this is a bad idea for the city.
I, yeah. Well, I agree there. I think, too, that what Jason had, was talking about here, with regard to future, again, we're throwing a lot on the comprehensive plan, but I mean, it is the comprehensive plan for the community, and we haven't had one in a long time. It's been, or it's been sitting on the shelf for a long time. But a usable, workable plan to address that and look at how other successful communities have, have done their land use planning. And that's what we're talking, it's land use planning, you know? You don't want to put a housing area right next to an industrial area either, you know, unless you want to have some problems in the future, just like you don't want to have a liquor store right next to an elementary school, or something like that. But, but to be able to go in and say, you know, you look at the broad picture of thoroughfares, you look at the broad picture of where the people are coming and going, and, and where the housing is, and where then the retail stores and where the industrial, industrial areas are, now the heavy commercial businesses. And I, we go to Dallas Fort Worth a lot, you can, it's pretty obvious, you can see a lot of land use planning in those areas, and there's areas in the older areas where they didn't do a very good job, but in the newer areas, they're doing an excellent job, not only protecting the housing and where the people live, but also making, making sure that they're on board, so when a developer comes in and they want to put in a new commercial district, that they have their full support.
But just to the side of that, Gerald, we had a situation here at council, it's been 10 years, 10 years ago or so, there's a piece of property, our zoning requirements would not allow you to put R3 next to industrial. And we had somebody came in and said, I want to build an apartment complex, and he was being denied, so he appealed it to us to approve it, and it's this apartment right across the street from the junior high school.
Yeah.
And I asked the gentleman, I said, did you realize it's going to be right next to that industrial park? He said, yes. Do you have fears that you're going to lose business, it's going to go bad because you can actually, he said, I take all my considerations, my decision, that's what I want to do. And we approved that project, that rezone, and he was able to put that in, even though our ordinance said, you can't do it next to an industrial park.
Yeah.
You know, I would have thought there would have been more arguments, and there were very few at the time, about traffic with the gent next to it, et cetera. There would have been more of those kinds of discussions, but it was no, because it's next to industrial park. Well, his investment was, what, $22 or $3 million investment in houses, I don't know how many, that's a huge project, and it's been good for Stephenville, been good for Tarleton and Stephenville. So, that's an example of, you know, our ordinance said no, and yet there was really nothing wrong with, or there was really no reason why not to get a bumper up next to a school, a retail area, and an industrial park. And it's fit, it's just put in it perfectly, now it works. So, I just want us to be careful. I mean, there's got to be times that we have some restrictions, there's just got to be, as we look for the betterment of the whole, of the citizens, but we can't, we got to be careful when a guy like that says, yeah, it could go bust, but it's not $27 million or $20, whatever it was, $22 million, it's not yours.
I agree. It is. You have to look at the entire thing, and you use common sense on it.
Right.
Because one of the things that we did, or this community has done, we've taken the biggest taxpayer in this community, and we've surrounded that taxpayer with housing and retail development, where there's no room for that one to expand it on. And are they going to be here five years from now, or 10 years from now, or something? We don't know the answer to that. But typically, it's when you have industrial parks.
Correct.
And stuff like that. You don't have housing in industrial parks. But you also have the $25, $26 million there from them, but do you have the, will we have in the future $100 million from an FM city? I don't know. Good question, but that's the kind of thing that goes into the planning process.
Right.
That we have to look at.
I appreciate you being looking at it.
Okay.
It sounds to me like you've got to look at the other side, too, because I'm familiar with a, I guess, a three, because out of the university, but it's right up to a remodeled Harbin Street, and I suspect that those houses on the other side of Harbin have a short lifespan. I mean, mine may be shorter than theirs. So, there's got, there's got, I think we, there's got to be a way that we do, that we go both directions on these, because I could, I could see up and down Harbin, restaurants, retail stores, and all kinds of...
Hotels, whatever.
Yeah, all kinds of stuff up and down there, and I'm sure it's zoned residential running out.
Think it is.
Good discussion.
It is. Thank you very much, by the way.
By the way, you have a song, reminds me of that 60 song.
Good discussion.
Our, our next item has to do with comprehensive plan, and I'm going to ask Steve, if you don't mind, and, and Jason to kick in here. We have had a total of, what, six now?
Five.
On that, that was, five, excuse me, requests for proposals, that we, that responded to our request for proposal, and those are going through an evaluation process at the present time. So, this is just a matter of update for this council and for the committee, and the idea here is to go through this process of scoring the ones that have come in, then have a, ideally a meeting of the committee to also look at this, maybe to sit down and with staff and interview these, and then bring this to the council, eventually bring it to the council for the May meeting, I mean, the March meeting, for a decision and a recommendation that we would provide at that time. And the idea, ideally, we will have a, another committee meeting, so just on those here, another committee meeting prior to our March the 7th, or is it March the 7th council meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did I leave something out there?
No, sir. I think you did.
Is there any, how do you feel about the ones that we've got in, or anything like that? Do you want to best not comment about it until we...
Well, first of all, the, the council, related to the discussion we just had, recognized that our future land use plan and some of the current zoning that we have across the city presented some challenges, so last year, you guys allotted some funding for us, and we drafted an RFQ in December, ran into a couple of weather delays, we got it out about mid-January, so we do have five responses back from that RFQ. We've got a couple from Fort Worth, one from San Marcos, one from Rockwall, and there's one that's escaping me right now, I have it in my notes.
Austin. Austin.
Austin, that's correct. So, the review process started last week, the, the submittals were due last Wednesday. We're trying to complete the reviews by tomorrow, and then we'll assemble those reviews and come up with the recommendation from there. It is on a pretty tight timeline to try to get a recommendation back to council by March 7th, but I know it's important to the council, you guys made it very clear that we wanted to try to get something moving on this fairly quick, so hoping we can have everything reviewed and that special committee meeting, as you referenced, and have some good information to share by March 7th, so.
Okay.
Pretty pleased with the proposals that we got back. I think some of them offer some, some really, I guess...
Unique.
A little different, a little different approach than what we, we've been having historically. The term is Euclidean zoning compared to, you know, a lot of cities are going to form basic zoning, or walkable cities is a big thing right now, so it will be somewhat of a paradigm shift, depending on which group we go with, but every single one of them, I think, offers some new ideas that maybe we didn't have years ago when we looked at the comprehensive plan last time. So, with that, glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
So, how do, how do you feel about this new way of looking at things, as represented by some of these, these companies?
So, trying to be cautious on, you know, sharing an opinion, but when I look at some of the other cities that we see, you know, fast growth, we do see that mixed-use development a lot, and that seems to be an interest that a lot of citizens have, and of course, with, with Tarleton State and our student population, you know, walkability or biking lanes, things of that nature, mobility and transportation is a big, big concern for us. As we look at this opportunity, you know, it doesn't come to get us to where we want to be, I think is going to, you mentioned $53 million earlier, you know, there's, there's a certain buy-in that I think the city's going to have to be willing to, to look at, or we're just going to have another plan on the shelf. So, I think it, it's really going to be one of those times where we have to decide how serious we are about it, and I think the, some of the proposals that you're seeing illustrate that there's a, there's a cost impact to this. If you really want to implement the plan, there's a cost impact. So, I think there's, I don't know that, you know, the zoning system that we have in place now, where we try to segregate everything, is necessarily the best answer, I think there's a blending component to that. Maybe residential can be a catalyst to, to retail in certain areas, but walkability is, is obviously something that is very popular back in the 40s and 50s, and not so much now, but I think we're seeing it starting to trend back that direction. So, I think it's a great opportunity, but I think it's really going to take some time for us to digest where we want to be and how we want to get there. So, probably rambled on that too much. Do want to mention the committee members, it's Councilman Chairman Gerald Cook, Councilman Clinton, then I've got Nick Williams, Public Works Director, and myself reviewing those proposals, and hopefully we'll get you some good direction back, good counsel consideration.
I'm going to tell you, I'm absolutely looking for a paradigm shift.
Okay.
What we have today, if you go back in time, all we do is, we, we've updated the future land use plan and the zoning. What I don't want to keep happening is walking in here, going against that almost every time. And when I look over the last three or four years, we're not developing the way any of that's been done. And so, it puts you guys in a spot of going against the plan and, and then feeling, you know, some kind of way about doing that, or stopping development, which we certainly don't want to do that. So, that means we need a paradigm shift in how we, we put this information together to make it work better for the development community and for in here. So, I'm, I'm absolutely looking for a different way of approaching it, because it's got to work better than it, than it does today.
Well, it looks like from some of the responses that we got for this, from, from this request, that, that seems to be the way a lot of people are thinking.
Yes, sir.
I mean, yeah.
I think that traditional viewpoint that cities have had for years and years and years, kind of that segregated land use that you talked about, it's, it's not working, and we see that every P and Z meeting now, we see that in here, so we, we need a better system.
We're seeing it in housing.
Yes.
We're seeing it, I mean, there certainly is a need for, we have a huge need for housing in this community, but it's not all single-family housing, it's apartment housing and whatnot, but also a lot of these seem to be focusing, too, on infill development, where you have your utility lines, everything already in the ground, and looking at how do you redevelop that particular area and save the city significant, I mean, save the taxpayers by that, significant dollar amounts rather than putting in the utilities that you need. So, I mean, there's a lot of, of that that's floating around there.
Can I see? Um, I obviously haven't seen the plans, but I'm excited to hear that there was one or multiple of them that were discussing the walkability, because that did come up in our, in a retail strategies meeting that we had, that, you know, everything with downtown Main Street things is the walkability to get around town, where people are, are walking. So, that's exciting.
I, I agree on the, on our Parks Master Plan we're looking at, that's a big, a big period to, he's really focused on his walkability, biking trails, and bike paths throughout town, so, so that's big. And I, I know I asked this before, but I can't remember the answer. What's our target completion date for this report?
It's going to be 12 to 14 months after we select, after this council selects the firm. It'll take about 12 to 14 months. Okay? Thank you, Steve. Well, you might as well stay up there, Steve, or...
He doesn't.
Oh, you're not going to do that?
I'll take that.
I thought, okay. I thought we'd put him on the hot seat.
He may, he may want to participate in this, in this meeting.
We have, the next item, the next item and the last item this particular committee is request for a new ordinance adopting extended hours for the sale, and offer to sell mixed alcoholic beverages by a holder of mixed beverage late hours permit. Jason, would you like to take that?
You stated it very correctly. I did talk to the business owner that put in the request with Secretaries Office.
I did talk to the business owner that put in the request with the secretary's office. And he told me, you know, he said, hey, look, I'm not looking to stay open until two o'clock every night. I just wanted to hit, you know, maybe one o'clock a couple more nights than what's currently allowed. Said unfortunately, the way the law is written doesn't give the city to the option to look at this on a business by business basis and doesn't give it the option to say, well, we'll do one o'clock as opposed to two o'clock. It's all or nothing. And so you you can consider an ordinance that would allow citywide the extended sale of alcohol from the hours of midnight to two AM. And so that's what the request is.
I was about to say my fast goes to time, but I would never believe that the city council of Stevensville, Texas, could have decided to sell, allow the sales of alcohol until two in the morning. Just an observation.
You just kept going to prom, that's what you did.
So how many does this actually affect? One, two, really? Still the ones in the county?
Chief, just a couple, isn't it? Well, I mean, I guess it would allow some others to do.
To start it.
I can see if somebody starts standing up and go two.
So it it's it's either all or nothing. In other words, it stays at twelve or it goes to two and that's.
Right.
Citywide regardless.
Every night except Saturday night, Sunday morning, which allows till one AM, I believe.
Right now?
Right now. But this would allow two o'clock, the extended hours, two o'clock every night.
Every night.
Yes.
Whereas right now, they only stay up until one o'clock on Saturday?
Saturday night, Sunday morning.
But they could do that every night if they wanted to.
No.
No, it's just Saturday night, Sunday morning.
Unless you approve extended hour.
So days, one Saturday night until two, Saturday morning until two.
Or they want it seven days a week.
No, he didn't specify which days of the week. He said, hey, look, this, I'd like to stay open till one a couple more times than what I do now just because I I know my business would, you know, be able to do that. In other words, he, his message to me and thus y'all is, I'm not looking to be a a two AM business, seven days a week or six days a week. But like telling you the second I told him, the law doesn't allow distinction on the council's part. Your your options are to approve extended hours, which allow till two in the morning or not approve extended hours.
Jason, on our, on our original rules for, we're still going by right now, that was, was that based upon T A B C laws for dry counties at the time?
No, that's, those hours are the hours period.
Okay. I know, I know this is pretty common in other, in other areas, in other, other cities, in other towns. I I don't have a problem with it. I I think it's, I think it's, you know, it's it's common for for other cities and and if they want to stay open a little later to, to, to get more business, that's fine with me.
Other comments?
Any indication, Jason, or there's several others in the room that might could answer about, I mean, any data on extended hours and.
Safety.
Safe, very, thank you.
Public safety.
Chief, sir. I mean, obviously, there's an impact. Do we have data here for us? No, can we go and research, pull some of that data? As Mr. Baskey said, I I don't want to be one to go against anyone and making money they're supporting their business and increasing that. But if there's, if there's a question about is it, is it good for public safety? That answer is no. You're allowing someone to drink longer in a business. I wish more would take ride, share, designated drivers, those type of things. In my presentation here in a little bit, I'll show you ninety-seven D W Is is what we did last year. But I'll, I'll speak a little bit more about that. But that's how many driver on toxic gas arrest we made in twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, sir.
Were most of those after one AM?
I'd have to go, I'd have to do, we do have some here today. The majority.
Did you let my mom go?
Take that off the recording.
Boy, you're in trouble now.
You are in so much trouble.
Thank you, sir.
Other, other comments from the committee or anybody else on the council?
I also worry about the safety part.
Could, Chief, could we? Would it be worthwhile for the council or for the committee to ask the chief to come back with some information, additional information with regard to D U Is and and whatnot?
What do you, just kind of get, tell us what you're looking for?
Just to get us some kind of idea if there's a problem, if, what kind of problem we have or 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 not?
I mean, he can pre, I mean, he can tell you what his numbers are.
Right.
Well, you said ninety-seven.
We can do a deep dive into that, into when those, when those all occurred and tell you which point even to most occur. We could look at other cities, comparable size, college towns, different things we can put together accordingly.
I would be interested in that.
I would kind of be interested in that, too. How about the rest of you?
I would be interested in it.
So so on that, Chief, you know, I I think if you're going to do a deep dive, too, you know, I would be interested in the time of day.
Correct.
Where they're coming from, if they've been at home drinking, if they've been at a bar drinking, you know, stuff like that, I think that would be real important.
Sometimes we don't know on all of those because we're not great cooperators. But we should be able to get most of that on most all of them.
This is a licensing issue. This was brought to us because the city secretary received this application and everything like that. Is there a time limit on that or anything like that that we're interfering with? If not, then I'd like to have the chief come back to us. If if the committee is okay with this, chief, come back to us, us with a kind of a deep dive and take a look at that. Would that be agreeable to everyone?
Sure.
And then we look at it the next committee meeting and 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 then make a recommendation or not to the full council. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. And that's all of our.
Mr. Newby, public health and safety.
Fire Department, number eleven, fire department presentation. Chairman Newby, public safety committee, mayor and council. I want to preface that this isn't really an annual report, just as a highlight of some statistics. I'm saying that because I've already seen PD's annual reports for a pretty.
Sign that one, Mueller.
We do. But it's a, it's really just a highlight, thank you, of twenty-two benchmarks. And then what we want to do is showcase our community resource paramedic program tonight. So I'm going to quickly go through some of this. We restructured our administrative staff. We got a new ambulance, air packs, cardiac monitors. We initiated, I will highlight a couple of these. We initiated a paramedic engine program. So when you see a fire engine, a big red truck going down the road, it's staffed with paramedics and all the equipment and supplies to act and treat as if it was an ambulance, just not transport. We did get some new uniform and outerwear. We acquired some very essential wildland firefighting gear. We deployed across the state six times for various wildfires across the state. And I'm telling you, it was every region of the state. We started rebuilding the training field. We did some demo work. We put some stuff in place and we're working closely with the county to put a really nice training facility together out there. We repurposed a police Tahoe for the fire marshal's office. We'll highlight, we have developed some close working relationships with E R A F County Fire and EMS. We are, today, we are working as one and we'll be bringing you back a automatic aid agreement here in the near future to show that we are working as one interlocually. We restructured deployment of service, how we cover our services with the resources we have. What we did is we, we got more in line with a safe deployment and more efficient deployment of resources. That's a fancy way to say we're running one ambulance instead of two. And we're running two engines, two engines staffed with more people. And we're covering everything that's going on with those resources better than before. And I'll go into that a little bit deeper in a moment. And then most importantly, we initiated a community resource paramedic. Several of these accomplishments really dovetail together. We couldn't have done one without the other. And this was a big one. Our service trends, we're slightly trending up. The solid line across the top is an estimated population. And of course, our service level is tied to our population. We are really EMS-based. The red piece of the pie there is the number of fire-related calls we ran in twenty twenty-two. The blue area is EMS. The seven hundred fifteen, the gray area is other calls. Everything from false alarms to public assist to to helping Mrs. Smith off the floor back in the van, those type of calls. The future, looking into the future and why we made some of these changes. Today, EMS-based transport, we go pick up, go to the hospital, go pick up, go to the hospital. I want to see less of that and more of the preventive work because of the efficacy of the work that we've done is just mind-blowing in several aspects. But the future would be meeting that demand of low acuity calls for healthcare head-on and putting the right resources in place to take care of them. So the overarching program, we would call it community risk reduction. We want to reduce the risk of our most vulnerable population, our elderly, our chronically ill, that sort of thing, with a community resource paramedic program. Our goal there is to reduce reliance on emergency services and the emergency room by assisting citizens navigation with their own healthcare and social services. We improve the safety of that vulnerable population. And and most importantly, we improve the quality of life of those residents. That's, that's a, a huge benefit that just comes along with it that we've seen through the work of the program. This is the fancy vehicle that we're delivering that service in. It's the, what year is that? Two thousand, is it nineteen? No, it's a, it's one of our, it's really a good vehicle. It's one of our, our, our workhorse Dodge command vehicles that we've converted to the community resource paramedic. And we are working on the strapping. It doesn't look exactly like that today. But this is the vehicle you'll see running around town, not only delivering care, working with and educating this population, it's also intercepting ambulance calls. Low acuity ambulance calls that we would send an ambulance and engine on or an ambulance on, we send our community resource paramedic on and he'll show up. If it needs an ambulance, he'll call for it. But generally, he's working with their primary care physician or the emergency room and delivering care on scene. And there's no transport. They don't incur the cost of a, of an ambulance ride or emergency room visit. And they get what they need, not only there, but a plan for taking care of them, their healthcare in the future. The role, so this is the interesting part is that, you know, why do we do this? I would say because we're the tip of the spear. We're the ones that see these folks that are in need first when they call nine one one. But we go out and the role of this community paramedic is going to be to improve their access to primary care. A lot of folks use nine one one because they don't have a primary care physician or insurance, or they don't know how to utilize the insurance they have. We provide care in the comfort of their own home. We'll, we'll be able to visit with them, educate them, treat them in the comfort of their own home without taking them to the emergency department. So we reduce those trips. We can prevent flare-ups in those chronic conditions and really importantly, improve their medication and nutrition compliance. When folks get discharged from the hospital, if they make a hospital visit, when they get discharged, it's, it's for them to remember everything they've been told. They, they just want to get out of there. And a lot of times, they're not picking up on all those instructions and they get back home and they can't remember or they don't want to ask. And so we will work with them on what that actually means, what their discharge orders were. And we see better compliance. You know, a community paramedic, what exactly is a community paramedic? There's, it's, it's an emerging profession across the United States. We see healthcare pushing down to the lowest level and we believe this is going to be, it's going to be the standard across the country where you see paramedics making house calls and and making appointments. But the experience as an emergency paramedic, degrees in EMS or community paramedicine, additional training in primary care, medicine, mental health, more importantly, is that that ride attitude. We just happen to be very lucky and and I'll talk more about who we use for that here in a moment. But it, there's some specialized training that goes with that, critical care, that sort of thing. So we are working through some of that training with the medics we have today to get those folks to that point of meeting that demand and doing it with the expertise. This is a very, it should be a very powerful slide, the efficacy of the program. Our CRP has been on the street for almost six months. It initially went out and saw thirty-five addresses and enrolled twelve people into the program. Those twelve people had made up over almost two hundred calls for service. In that six-month time, we've reduced their reliance on emergency services over eighty-six percent. Just that little bite in that short period of time, the impact's been phenomenal. We've seen the same statistics in other areas and and in programs I've been associated with before. We've seen these same types of numbers of reduction in use of emergency services. It's a powerful program. Support for the, the program, of course, the American College of Emergency Physicians. You know, nationwide, it's, it's gotten the recognition of of its impact. But locally, since we've started deploying our community medic, we've gotten great support from the hospital, from the emergency room physicians, and now from the local primary care physicians across the city. They're calling Stephen, and I'll tell you more about Stephen in a bit. They're calling him directly, saying, how do I get a, how do I get to be a part of your program? Will you see my people? And we are blessed to have Stephen Jacobson as our community resource paramedic. Mr. Jacobson came to work for us some time back, left and decided the world would be better if he came back. And we're very glad he did because he came to us originally with just a wealth of experience in major metropolitan, high-volume EMS systems. Went and flew for a few years doing critical care, air medical. He has higher degrees in EMS. He's a critical care paramedic, which is a higher level certification. We're going to blink an eye, he's going to be a nurse, he's going to be a doctor. He's got great things ahead of him. I'm telling you now, we're, we're, we're going to squeeze everything we can out of him while we've got him. With that, I want to let Mr. Jacobson tell you a little bit about some of the cases he's seen and be able to answer your questions for you. But also know that he's had a long day. At a little after three o'clock this morning, his wife delivered a brand-new baby. I think he's here.
Oh, hello, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Yeah, I just wanted to talk about a few of the cases I've seen. Like Chief was saying, I've, I've seen quite a few, I've had quite a few referrals and rolled about twelve people in the program. Out of those original twelve, I only see one original, of my original clients. So the, the program is, is pretty effective. The goal is you enroll people, you take care of their needs, kind of. The goal is you enroll people, you take care of their needs, kind of guide them to be able to make their own healthcare decisions, take charge of their own health, where, so they don't need the dependence on 911 or the emergency room. And they graduate out of the program and continue to live a relatively, you know, normal life where you go to the doctor when you have the sniffles and you don't go to the ER and call an ambulance to get there. The first case here is, it's probably, it's the, the best example that we had, or that I have of just the, the, the total program. It's not just one component. This was, this hit all of the, the medical case management, the mental health, social work. So it's, we were introduced to a, a man, a 64-year-old male. He was homeless, he was living in his car. He came out as a 911 call for an unresponsive person in a vehicle. The EMS crew on scene took care of him, determined he was having some type of, of a medical problem. He was transported to the ER, discharged from the ER, was told, told this ER staff that he had, had an apartment that he was supposed to be going to, and that's why he moved to Stevieville. He went home shortly after he was discharged home, started receiving back-to-back 911 calls. Eight 911 calls within the first 36 hours for a lift assist. And a lift assist is somebody who's saying, hey, I'm on the ground and I can't get up. So automatically, I'm seeing all these, these calls popping up and I say, well, this is, there's something going on here. Started getting calls from the shift commander saying, probably need to look into this guy. It seems like he, he'd be a good fit for the program. And when I get that, I don't really know exactly what, what I'm going to be getting. He was transported again that evening to the ER after a fall. At that point, I went, Sunday evening, talked to him in the ER, got a little bit more of a background from him, moved here from Plano. Says Stevieville's the only place where he could find an apartment. No family around here, anything. And he was about to be discharged home again. So I said, well, you know, he's already been, he's already been out there a few times. He's already, he's already been transported twice. You know, there's something that needs to be done. So I made arrangements the next day to go and meet with him in his, in his home. When I arrived in the morning, he was found, he was living in his apartment, had no furniture, had no food, he sleeps on an inflatable mattress. My partner and I knocked on the door, didn't get an answer, knocked a little louder, no answer, checked the door, it was unlocked, we go inside, we find him laying on the floor. He's confused, he said he's been trying to get to his, his cell phone was, didn't have a charge and that he, he needed, needed some help. So I was pretty confident that if we hadn't made contact with him previously, he said he'd been screaming for help all night for 12 hours and nobody came to help him. My partner and I were able to find him, get him up off the ground, assess him, determine he wasn't in any major medical, didn't have any major medical problem. But we said, all right, well, this is a lot more serious than we found out to be. It's really, his only thing he had was an inflatable mattress that didn't even hold air. So he would go, he'd sit in his little wheelchair, he would get tired of sitting in his wheelchair, he'd lay on the ground, can't get up because his inflatable mattress loses air, and call 911 for the help. So we immediately got started now that it was Monday morning, called the food bank, got some food lined up for him, got some clothing from the thrift store donated, went to one of the hotels and asked if they had any additional phone chargers so we can get this guy a phone charger. They donated a phone charger to this gentleman, went back home to check on him, he was again lying on the floor. So we helped him up again and we had to make, knew we were, have to make arrangements for something more. So we talked to him about a nursing home admission, saying this is probably, you being at home is probably not the best thing for your health. Would you consider a nursing home admission just temporarily for rehab? And he, he agreed. So by coordinating with, with one of the local physicians, we had ruled to get him directly admitted to one of the nursing homes. From, it was about 4:00 PM by the time he agreed to go to a nursing home and by 7:30 PM, he was in the nursing home. He stayed there for about two months, continued to make visits to him weekly just to check in with him, see if he needed anything. He was doing well with rehab. He was ultimately discharged from the nursing home to be closer to family in San Antonio. So he initially had eight contacts by us prior to enrollment within those 36 hours after enrollment in the program, very, very brief. Zero, zero contacts. We met his needs, he went, got the care he needed in the nursing home. He would have had difficulty accessing it from, from the beginning. He really needed a patient advocate, he needed somebody that could navigate some of the different resources for him. And it was, it was a success. He's, I talked to him not too long ago, he says he's living in San Antonio, things are better now that he's closer to family. But he was, he was extremely grateful for the help that he provided. Again, an elderly gentleman with some considerable medical problems, he said he was so happy with everything that he wanted to repay us by coming to the fire department to wash our trucks for us. And I told him that we were just happy that we were able to help him and that we were grateful that the city has given me the ability to, to go out and, and do this type of work. The second case I have is a, that of approximately 40-year-old female. She has a lot of chronicle, chronic medical conditions, very poor with her medication and nutrition compliance, very frequent use of EMS in the emergency department, very frequently admitted. She's another one that kind of hits the criteria for the, what people would call a frequent flyer. We call them friendly faces. So she had 21, or I'm sorry, 23 calls for EMS and out of those 23 calls, she was transported 20 times. Again, the, the numbers are pretty staggering when you, when you consider the, the amount of times that some people access this emergency services system. And it's not for heart attacks, strokes. These are people that are having difficulty breathing for one way or one reason or another or they're not taking their medications and it causes flare-ups of their condition. I began seeing clients in August, she was actually the first client I enrolled, and I continue to see her today. August 2022, as soon as I went inside, found worrying conditions inside the house, very poor state of, 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 of living. The conditions are affecting her health, there are frequent calls of her falls. She has home oxygen that she couldn't use because of the entanglement hazard because of all the stuff that was in her house. So she'd call 911 due to difficulty breathing or her blood oxygen level's getting low. This is, here's some pictures of what the, the conditions were like. She spent her days sitting in that brown chair in the corner, day in, day out, because she couldn't go anywhere else because that's where her oxygen concentrator was. If she had to go to the bathroom, she had to take her oxygen off, walk to the bathroom. Her oxygen levels would drop, she'd get dizzy, chest pain, she'd call 911. So you can imagine the, the sanitation concerns with that, too. She would also lose medication in her, in her pile of, of garbage and it was, she was taking expired medications or she was mixing up dosages, it wasn't a good condition for her. The kitchen didn't, had, the dishwasher didn't work, so they weren't cooking food. They were relied on Meals on Wheels and some other types of meal delivery services. Again, the, the Meals on Wheels tries their best to, to accommodate diets, but they can't restrict what people eat necessarily. So they're eating whatever, whatever they like. Started with referring her to Pecan Valley. I talked to her, she said that she had, had an appointment with Pecan Valley for counseling and she hadn't gone because, for one reason or another. Reached back out to them, got them to come to see her in her home so she didn't have to worry about getting transport there. Again, concerned with someone who uses oxygen frequently. Talked to her primary care doctor, we improved access to, for her to access, for doctor's appointments, doing telehealth, whatever we needed to do. I was able to provide more visits in the home and kind of interface with the doctors and let him know what I was finding. Through the six months that I've been seeing her, the most notable change has been the, the trust that I've been able to develop. You can go into somebody's house and you can tell them, this isn't right, you shouldn't be living like this, this is, this is not normal. And people won't listen to you. You, little by little, you develop trust, you talk to them, they find that they can confide in you for concerns that they may have and you're not there to judge them, you're there to help them. So little by little, she agreed to allow myself and family to assist with cleanup, something that she once told people, no, get out of here, I'll, I'll never do it. Adult Protective Services has been involved and she even said that she wasn't interested with them. She, and she, so she now agrees. Funny enough, Waste Connections actually donated a dumpster for us to use and we were able to do a clean-out of, of the residents to reduce, to remove old furniture and a lot of flammable materials, things that would burn very easily and people with limited mobility usually would fall victim to, to, you know, those types of fires. After the cleanup, we were able to, this is, these are the after pictures. The most notable change would be the, she now sits in a different corner with her oxygen concentrator and she can now take her oxygen, she has enough oxygen tubing to go all the way to the bathroom, she doesn't have to worry about entanglement hazards in her, in other furniture or whatever might be in the way. So she hasn't had to call 911 for low oxygen levels again. We've also kind of helped to clean up her kitchen a little bit, made it so that her, they could wash dishes, they could start cooking at, at the house. Again, I've, I'm still working to graduate her from the program, it's just baby steps and I'm perfectly fine with that. Referred her again to nutrition counseling, the, the hospital teaches cooking classes for diabetes education as part of their diabetes education and she now can attend those classes to learn what to cook to prevent herself from having different issues associated with her diabetes. Since her enrollment in the program, she went from 23 times that she's accessed 911 to four. And those four times have been for relatively unavoidable things, but it's still a considerable improvement. She's still making steady progress, she still puts a lot of trust in, in myself and in our program. She's said time and time again that she's extremely grateful that the city has these type, this type of program available and she is just happy to be part of it. Ultimately, she has an improved quality of life, her fall risk was lessened, she can now use her wheelchair to get around, which lessens fall risk, and she can, most importantly, use her home oxygen without having any fear of, you know, having to take it off and, and her oxygen level's dropping. But those are, those are just two of the cases of things that I've seen. I've seen a lot of other, I've made a lot of contacts with people that they just need something quick, quick little change and they're, and they're fine. Sometimes it's just people need some fluids to get through a, a little bit of illness and you save them the, the trauma of having to be transported or, or whatever it may be. But if any of y'all have, you have questions for me, I'm, I'm happy to answer them. This, this is, I know it's a pretty new thing, so I'm open to, there's no question I want to answer.
I shared, everybody up here got a letter that was written about you, I shared it with the chief. So I hope he shared that with you as well.
Yes.
From Citizen, it's very, very complimentary of what you've done. Case management for people who are chronic health and social issues is very important and we don't have enough of that and I appreciate that because that's kind of what you're doing is case management.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I've got, I've got to make the statement. We're not using tax dollars to fix anyone's place or their situation, we're facilitating with, it's, it's prevention, it's a prevention program that we're just facilitating resources that are available already.
Do we have a list of, like, the gentleman that didn't have a bed or things like that? Do we have a list of places that, that are willing to help or is there a place that we can, businesses could sign up to be on that list where if you go into a home and something's needed that you could contact them or is that possible?
Yeah, so one of the, what, a great thing we have available to us is the Eret County Community Bridges Program that was developed through the, through THR's Community Impact Grant last year or the year before. And they have all access to a lot of different resources, but just in, I'm involved in a lot of the social service organizations, the charity organizations and attend their meetings. And they, they have multiple ways of, of getting things like that. So if that gentleman had wanted to stay home, I told him, I said, we could, I already had a bed lined up for him. And it's just using community bridges or contacting the, you know, the hope, the decor, basic needs or whoever, and they, they'll, they have a lot of resources and they're much more experienced in navigating those types of resources. So they're, they themselves are a great resource for connecting people to.
I appreciate you.
The churches used to have a resource manual. The churches got together, like First Baptist and Graham Street got together, they had a resource manual of what organizations in town will support, is that still there, do you know?
Yeah, they're, they're working on it right now. They actually, actually added the fire department, the cares program into the manual so that people can access that for.
Which of those community chess programs, where, where do I send this person when I don't? So that we're working, I just knew a couple of years ago, I worked on that.
THR has one that they've made as well as the Hope for Homeless, or Homelessness Hope. They have another one that they're working on right now, too. There's a lot of resources in the community. I'm very impressed with the, what we have available to, to the community.
It's a giving community.
I think this is an incredible program, Chief. I thank you for bringing it and, and Mr. Jacobson, Jacobson, it's, it's clear you're passionate about it, so. It's, if there's, if nothing else, you're probably, you're giving people hope that probably thought, that felt there was no hope at some point, and that's pretty amazing. And whatever, whatever benefit we see on the backend in reducing calls and that is great, but, but you're giving people hope every day and that's, that's pretty incredible.
Congratulations, Daddy.
Go back to that baby now.
Chief lit him off.
Does it disappear?
You want to move on to number 12?
Yes, sir.
Okay, number 12 is Consider Approval of a FEMA Safer Grant Application.
Well, I hope he tugged on some heartstrings. What we want to do now is ask permission to apply for a FEMA Safer Grant, which is the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. Through FEMA, it's for firefighters. They will staff 100% of the firefighter's salary or reimburse 100% of the firefighter's salary for three years and then the city would pick up from there going forward. We'd like to ask for three firefighters in, in this round of distribution, which over the three-year, year period would be about $656,000.
What is our match, is there a match?
There's zero match. We would pick up the salaries on, on year four, which is well over $200,000. Those are really rough numbers, too, and I'm using last year's Monica's numbers.
I'll speak about this one, too, because I started talking about this in 2019, I think was the first year that I had brought this up and, and there were some concerns at that time and we talked again in 20 and then we finally got some people hired out of, out of, just out of the, out of the city coffers in 20, I'll lose track. I've, I've been doing this too long already.
It was just before I got here.
So I'm excited to see this here. I know there's always some concern of what happens three years down the road if, when the federal funding stops and we can't cover that. Do you have any ideas about how to, to address that or have you talked with Monica about that?
I'll speak to that.
Okay.
You know, we talked at budget time, you guys were saying, hey, you're adding positions in every area of the city except public safety, what about them? And I said, well, I'm going to have to get, you know, get back to them, we got to make gains in other areas. And so both departments and their workloads are demonstrating we're going to have to address staffing. So that was one of my challenges, if you can find somebody else to pay for it and defer that for us, that's certainly helpful, that allows us to continue to create those revenue streams that'll support that when we do get there. So that's, that's what we would do.
I'm always in favor of bringing federal or state dollars back here to help us get where we need to be. It helps us get there faster than we can do on our own. The need's there today, we know it's going to be there in three years when, when we end up having to pay for it. So if we can get the resources here today and rather than trying to do it one at a time over three or four years, that, that's a positive to me. We're going to have to do it in three years regardless, the way we're growing, so.
I will say that this past year, we, we rearranged as much as we could in our service delivery, in our structure, as I said, to maximize our efficiency going forward. And we're doing a really good job with the support of our partners, Eret County Fire and EMS. We've got a fantastic program, it's a one-man show today. And I'll tell you, it's, it's on his shoulders. Now, he's bringing some, some young medics along and we've got some great hope in the future. These are guys riding on the trucks, too. He's riding on the trucks. So this is dual purpose of, you know, we're not, I'm not creating a new division that's just going to do this, they're also. They're also fighting fire, doing EMS calls, that sort of thing. So it's a dual role.
Do I hear a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, I make the motion to approve, uh, application of the FEMA Safer Grant.
It's been approved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I propose, if we could help.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the council, and our Public Health and Safety Committee, it is always my honor to present, um, last week, I, at the end of the week, was kind of sick with a cold and stuff, so I'm biting a cough, so bear with me. Got some water and a mint here, hopefully that'll help that. But, um, this presentation contains our key statistics and a look at the last seven years when we look at, from twenty-two back. I tell you, it's, um, it's, again, an honor to stand up here and talk about the hard work, talk about one of our busiest years ever in our history, but the top-notch professionalism of the men and women. And you hear me say that a lot, but that's our key main guiding principle. And, um, the privilege of serving and protecting the citizens of Stevieville is, there is no greater honor for us. So as we go through this, we can do a couple of things. There's a, quite a few slides, if we can do the questions at the end, or if you have questions along the way and you would like to stop and talk about that, please don't hesitate to say that to me. There's quite a bit of information here, but I, we could go even a, a lot further with that. So as we go on to the next slide, our vision, values, and as I mentioned, that guiding principle have always been excellent service, top-notch, and, and the team player is big to me internally and externally with either our, the law enforcement partners or the entire community. I'll talk about that a little bit at the end, but that integrity and respect. And so, again, we, the next slide will just mention the top-notch professionals, so we'll go on past that. All right, so on the heels of the fire department talking staffing, and as the city manager mentioned, thank you for talking about that. Very blessed, forty sworn police officers, that includes me, the command staff, the executive staff, as referred to, uh, down to our newest two rookies that are actually in academy, scheduled to graduate in March. I'll have to say we're very blessed compared to the rest of the state and the nation. There's not a chief I don't talk to daily, locally or nationally, that doesn't say they have staffing and hiring problems. We've had forty sworn on the books since October first. And so, um, we have some young crews, they're under contract three-year with us. So we, we monitor, we will monitor that as we get closer to that. And so we're keeping our, our application pool going with some interested candidates that want to be here. But, uh, recently I was down in Austin with about a hundred chiefs, and there was not a one but myself there that was able to report the, from around the state that we were fully staffed, and have been so since October first. Uh, that's a double-edged sword, I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. Twenty-one operational support staff, we couldn't do our job without them. A lot of those are telecommunicators. We are down one telecommunicator, but we have someone in the process now that we believe will make it through that, um, challenging process. And we have one part-time position that was funded by council for this year for accreditation manager. One of our goals is to become accredited by the state as an accredited police agency. And so we do, we're hopefully going to be able to fill that for the rest of the year soon. So that puts us at nineteen of the twenty-one, of the twenty-one, two are part-time. So really nineteen full-time operational support staff there. Okay, and to the meat of the presentation, twenty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-four calls for service in twenty twenty-two. So as you look at that, there's not been another year like that. That's concerning for us. It's, uh, challenging for us. When you talk about staffing, one of the challenges related to this is, is that, whether you use any kind of sports analogy or anything, uh, we're challenged with our staffing to be able to say we have a bench we can pull from as things get crazy for us. Things in twenty twenty-two were crazy for us. We have one sergeant who's on long-term injury from an altercation involving a mentally challenged individual, and we have the two in the academy. So we're already down those three right now that are not full-time, are out there on the street. Did some reshuffling internally in the department, and we, our minimum staffing on the patrol at any one given time right now is five officers on the street and a traffic officer, a traffic sergeant during the daytime, and then obviously the command staff, we supplement that. Don't have those exact numbers, but I know they had at least calls for service for me alone around thirty or so that responded either as a primary or secondary officer for those particular calls. So we're monitoring this, we don't know if this is a one-off, obviously, but you can see from two thousand sixteen till now that it's a great concern for us. Next slide. So this one I pay real particular attention to all the time. Any chief wants to see these numbers stay very high, because one of those things that this represents is the love and support the community has for its police officers. This is officer-initiated activity, this is not, they did not receive a nine one one call. They did not receive a dispatch call, they did not receive someone saying, hey, I've got a problem, I need, or will you check into something? They said on their own, I need to talk to that individual, I need to look into this, I need to stop, I need to walk around this building and check the doors, I need to make this traffic stop without anyone telling me to do that. And so, um, as you look at those numbers, I want those numbers, as I said, any chief does, want those to be considerably high, because they feel like a supported community for one, has their back, and knows that, um, they're out there in a proactive stance, talking to individuals who are out there. We've solved several, um, vehicle burglaries based on this officer-initiated activity alone, finding someone walking in a neighborhood that initially we were not able to tie to them, but through investigation with detectives, able to tie to it. So very proud of that number and very proud to talk to you about that number. Next slide, please. Okay, so we talked about traffic stops at the last council meeting under the State of Texas Center Plan Racial Profiling Act and those reports. So you, you have all of the details going into that, what you didn't have is a comparison of the previous years, the six years prior to that. So in my three years of being here, twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, tell you, one of the number one, if not the number one complaint I received almost daily since arriving here was the traffic problems. Our vehicle accidents, uh, reckless driving, all kinds of types of traffic complaints daily, trying to come directly into me, or, or stopping me on the street, whatever it is, to there. So, um, again, no one wants to receive one, nor do we want to issue a traffic citation, but we want to correct that behavior, reduce our accidents, and so that was almost doubled from twenty-one to twenty-two there. Next slide. And those complaints have gone down, I'm not sure if they have to y'all, but they have to me. It's kind of shifted to a different way. Vehicle crashes, we would always love for these to be at zero, but you maintain pretty steady in the last seven years with right around five hundred crashes. Uh, last year was concerning for us, is another reason we stepped up that traffic enforcement, having five hundred and thirty crashes in twenty twenty-one was a, a, a big concern for us there. And so, um, I think we've got our challenges cut out for, especially with our growth, trying to get those numbers to come down, but we want to keep working on that. As we mentioned earlier about DWI, as you can see, that seven-year snapshot from seventy-four to ninety-seven, they've stayed pretty relatively close together there. Uh, the state of Texas, in talking about grants and different things, other, you know, have asked us to come back into some programs where we put officers out there on, uh, for selected traffic enforcement to actually work on that. We do some of that on our own right now. But it's challenging with our call volume, it's challenging with, with our traffic enforcement, it's challenging with everything to, to not burn everyone out real fast. We have a small amount of staff that work all the time and then work extra assignments. Councilman Haskins not able to be here to also talk, but has expressed interest about our special events and how many things that we work related to that, and that's where it comes in. This would be another specialized assignment if we put them on that. We're able to do a few of those, Fourth of July, New Year's Eve, some of those type of holidays, when we want extra officers out there, when we know there will be more people drinking and driving on the road. But we'll get that deep dive to you that we mentioned earlier about that. So, next slide, please. Let's talk crime aspect of it. Start with the worst, about the crimes, the crimes against people. We're very superstitious in, as police officers. We don't like to, uh, to jinx ourselves, so I won't talk about the first category on the left there on the chart. And so moving on to those sexual assault, it's a major concern for us, because you can see declining. A lot of the victims are college students that live in, or the incident occurred on, on, off of campus, you know, with us there. So, uh, working with Cross-Tempest Family Service, a lot of others, to, uh, Man Charlton State University Police Department to reduce those numbers, but that's a big concern for us as we see that number continuing to trend upward. The aggravated assault and robberies, we, we can see where the robberies are there in the middle, and the aggravated assaults, we like that number's gone down. But, um, these are crimes where one person has wanted to commit a crime against another one, so major concern for us there, except for the first category. So second, the next slide is property crimes, crimes against, um, the property you own. A pet peeve of myself and all of our departments there is that you work hard to, whether you buy something, whether you, you have a home, any of those type of things, and especially related to narcotics addicts like to steal anything they can to trade for narcotics. I'll talk more about narcotics in a minute, but, um, we really go after this hard. And you can see we've got a little bit of an uptick from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. But the, the biggest thing I can say to y'all, or to the audience listening out there, or those who may watch this later, is that please lock the doors of your vehicles. Please give them, or give us a fighting chance and to, um, keep them from stealing your gun or stealing your laptop or purse or something that you leave in your car. I want you to always feel safe here, feel safe going home, walking outside, those type of things, but we have a lot of opportunists that are looking for a quick buck and what they can do to steal something to do that. So trying to keep those numbers as low as we can, and any help from the public would be great related to those property crimes. And the next slide, so I threw this one in there, and it's, it's because it's going to be a future topic that, that you'll all be hearing from us about as the SISD. We currently have two school resource officers, or known as SROs, Henderson and, and High School. However, they also help cover the other activities at the other schools. And this will give you just a little bit of snapshot of the last two calendar years. Work on even breaking some of that up in the school years would probably be easier to understand some of that workload. But SISD has asked for us to go into partnership to add a third school resource officer. And in the meantime, related to that, myself, every one of us spend as much time in the schools as we can in our every free minute that we have. And I'll talk about community involvement in a minute, but one of the things we do at Central is both the executive staff and patrol staff will greet every single kid coming to Central on High Five Fridays. We'll put the high five. But we do random walkthroughs, we do random door checks. Every single one of us in the department will take odd times to go help these two school resource officers. That does include any of those numbers that we do in the schools. And I'm proud to report that, that especially since Uvalde, we have, we have great school system, great partnership with them, and our safety checks and everything have provided outstanding results for us as far as keeping the doors locked externally and, uh, doing either a lockout, as recently occurred, or anything further. We had some challenging weeks in there with some threats to the schools and were able to solve and work through all of those. So very, very busy year for every member of the department when it comes to school resource officers. Something very proud of that's been done in the past, and we had a little lull with it, so we've got it back going again. And so we have a detective sergeant from the Stevieville Police Department that leads a combined city-counting narcotics unit. Kept these a little bit of bait, because we're about to go out with several more in, uh, federal indictments that will come out with warrants there, but since November twenty twenty-one, they've been actively live and going with methamphetamine and cocaine being the two targets. Methamphetamine's coming from Mexico in volumes I never thought I would see in my career after, and approaching thirty-three years after March first. It's being delivered to Dallas-Fort Worth and then being delivered to the rural areas from there. So as a result of that, we have another detective and an Eret County SO deputy detective, and almost a full-time federal drug enforcement agent assigned to us, working on continuing that, but he is solely assigned to us and has been phenomenal. Say enough about that, we'll talk more about that later on down the road, that what he's done with that, because they'll take those cases again all the way back to the source in Mexico. But currently, in just a short time, they, they've got forty-two defendants, fifteen cases, again, these are off federal, and then multiple ongoing local, state, regional investigations. About to come out with, I think, close to another twenty, um, arrest warrants shortly for dealers of methamphetamine. Cocaine's making a comeback, and the college crowds concerning us dearly. And so that's why this narcotics unit is going after that. Yes, sir?
Chief, have we, have we seen anything with fentanyl?
We have, yes, sir. We've had one fentanyl overdose death, um, and we have had another fentanyl overdose that did not result in death. That victim was not cooperative with us. The first one, the fentanyl came from the oil field where the individual worked in West Texas and came here home for the weekend and passed away. And we have, just as of a couple nights ago, made a seizure, seizure of fentanyl and cocaine mixed together on a traffic stop. And so it's a concern for us.
Really worried about that.
So in my left pocket is Narcan. So every police officer for the city of Stevieville is carrying a, a nasal spray of Narcan in there, not only for ourselves, but should, um, or for our K-9, well, I'll talk about in just a second, or for anyone else, but, um, it's, it's starting to be a real quick, um, concern for us.
Yes, sir.
So speaking of our K-9, that, um, we also keep that Narcan handy for K-9 Rolo, who joined us September ninth of twenty twenty-two. So these stats are gonna be just since that date, so they bleed into twenty-three, unlike the rest of the presentation that just showed, uh, twenty twenty-two together. But we couldn't be more proud of, of this couple of Officer Stone and K-9 Rolo. Since September ninth, they have made fifty-two arrests, see fifty-eight grams of methamphetamine. You'll see the THC oil and wax, the net grams cocaine and the marijuana. For a total of twenty thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars in narcotics values seized. But, um, as Rolo's young, as Rolo, we, um, grows a little bit, we will be more out in the community with, with him. And, uh, but we're still in a pretty good training phase right now. And, uh, so we want, we want to finish through that before we get him into some large school crowds and so forth like that. But, uh, we're pretty excited about the quality of work that this K-9 is producing for us. This team, it takes both of them, but the dog is, is really phenomenal.
We only have one dog?
Yes, we have one in the school also, I'm sorry. So, um, our, one, the SRO has a K-9 partner, Ixy, also.
Good, good.
Yes, sir. But that one's primary, ninety-nine percent is there at the schools, SISD. So I want to take a minute to talk about this. Um, there's just a few things listed on there. What you see is the First Responder Pep Rally, our second annual one this year. Well, we get the brown wood game, burn the wood, and couldn't have asked for a better game that is the First Responder Appreciation Pep Rally. Where myself and all of us get out there and, um, the cheerleaders struggle with our practice day the night before, um, especially with our gear and everything that we do, but, um, we have an absolute blast. I could write pages about the things that we do to contribute to the community. And we love every minute of it, every officer does, and it's, it's a part of that honor, again, that goes on for us. Um, just a few of the, of some of the ones, uh, that we've really done a, a lot with recently. I mentioned High Five Friday and some of those there, but at some point, um, I do need to capture really all of, all of those things on there, on, on a forward-facing public document, because as I've given presentations, whether it's to the Stevieville Study Club, um, you name it, Optimus, different things out there, they're kind of blown away about that we're able to fit those things into everything that, that we do with the community. But, uh, as I mentioned about the love and support, it's our job to, to earn that trust, earn that privilege to protect and serve, and part of the way doing that is how we can give back to our community and everything that we can. Just glancing at, at one list, you know, one of the things that I hear- Just glancing at, at one list, you know, one of the things that I hear the most, and I'll throw that out here for the community as they listen or watch, is our house watch program. A lot of departments have gone away from that for the time consuming. And I know some of you in here have even taken advantage of that and, and I highly recommend that you do that. But if you're going to be away from home for a little while, please let us know. We will randomly check on that. We will check and make sure everything's okay. We will talk to those who are maybe watching your house for you. And, and so there's a lot of things like that that are very important to us to do when it comes to the community. So lastly, before I really open it up questions, I, well, I mean, I'll throw social media out there. We have a great following on, on Facebook. We, our Nixle's the same way, our website, also information game. We're always trying to improve that and expand on that. But I want to take a minute just to tell you about our challenges. So today, and, and this is what I will ask you to kind of be on the lookout for as I work with the city manager going forward is that COVID, the things that we've experienced since I've come on board here, the supply chain issues. Today I had, I believe it's seven police officers working in three vehicles. So fleet is a major issue for us. We are, we have five on order from now from two budget cycles before that we don't even have in possession yet because of chip issues and other things. We have another four we're about to open bids on. We have no idea in sight. We believe we will have two of those. They keep telling me every week, Friday, chief, we'll have it for you by Friday. I'm like, okay. So what that has resulted, and we've always had a history here forever of taking good care of our vehicles and rotating them out. We are running every vehicle we have 24 hours a day right now with two officers in it. So I want any bad guy that's out there on the street anytime to turn around and look over their shoulder and there's a black and white looking at them or white and thinking, not in this town, not in Stevensville, go somewhere else and commit your crime. And we're struggling with that right now. So please keep that in the back of your mind. I, we're looking at some other alternative solutions and stuff. But foot patrol, we, we all, some of us do need to get out there and do a little more foot patrol. But the city's big and growing and so we, our response times would greatly suffer related to that. But that's a major challenge for us. And when you talk about grants and stuff, I don't have the luxury currently as Chief Isbell did with the safer grants and other things like that. Because I can tell you one thing is that looking at a lot of departments that have 50, 60, 70, 80, 90, 100 vacancies. How do you help those? Stevensville has none. So it's a double-edged sword that men and women want to work here, want to protect and serve here, and there are no vacancies. And so we are struggling to keep up with this volume. Again, we'll see what does 23 look like. But I'm going to ask for your help. I mean, we've got, as the city manager mentioned, look at public safety this year because I'm proud of the fact that we meet the national average for female officers. Also don't have enough grandkids at the police department now, but we have three more on the way, one support staff and two officers expecting. And we'll put them in other investigative type roles and different things to keep them safe as we go through there. But we have, we have concerns. We have to make sure someone can get there when someone calls 911. They have the wheels to get there and that, and that we can get there as fast as we can to answer them. And so that, those two things keep me, I mean, besides the number one thing that keeps me open night is I get the call that someone's been hurt, injured or killed in the line of duty. We're not exempt to that. Rural areas are still the leading locations for officers to be killed in line of duty, 30,000 population or less. And so we work hard every day with our training and staffing to make sure that that doesn't happen to us here. And, but we've got, we've definitely got some challenges going into the rest of 2023 and into 2024 budget year going forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions. If there's any additional information or something that didn't present that you may be looking forward, please let me know again on the VWI, we'll do a deep dive on that and get that report for the next committee meeting. But we, we look at a million other things related to crime and interactivity in the city. But that's just an overarching, small snapshot of the key areas. Thank you.
Because you're here, I'm going to grill you. And that's what you do to other people, sometimes grill them? On the first, first set of slides there where there was the huge increase. Like, like you've jumped from 17,000 to 20. I mean, is there something behind that? Is there, is it because of the expanding population?
We believe that is more people coming here, the growth. And, you know, when you look at some of the Main Street and tourism, some of those numbers and the people that come in, some of those type of presentations, they'll talk to you, almost 50,000 people a day, 45,000 shopping here, coming here. And so we always want people to not hesitate to call. Now, some of those calls are only numbers that require an officer to talk to you on the phone, but that's still taking that officer having to stop what they're doing and handle that call. But it's worth a deep dive in, you know, to see, I mean, what are those specific type of calls? But, you know, when you have a Sunday night and you're arrest six and you, you know, we do have these shift reports and we look at everything over the past 12 hours and we all sit around and look at it, luckily, what was that type of call? What was this type of call? It's, it's growth, yes, sir. It is, it is growth. That's everything that we can point to. There are more people from all over here. Yes, sir. Especially moving in from out west. Yes, sir. And yet, any other question about part of, or another slide there?
Let me catch you after the meeting. I think I got one more.
Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Chief.
Number 14.
Yes, sir.
Tow fee study.
Yes, sir, absolutely. So as I mentioned that last presentation, with, with being full staff, they were able to bring back traffic officer position, traffic sergeant Moore. And so at the committee meeting, and I believe that was the November, yes, November 18th, Public Health and Safety Committee meeting, we were asked to conduct a tow fee study based on complaints regarding non-consent towing and especially apartment complexes or primarily apartment complexes throughout the city. As a result of that, you have a multi-page document, I believe it's close to 20 pages, 19 attached to your agenda packet. And so without having to go through every single one of those pages, I want to invite Traffic Sergeant Robert Moore, who is the author of that document, to come forward and help me with this. But on page 18 of that document is the summary or conclusion of that tow fee study with page 19 being a breakdown. And so what he did is he reviewed 13 agencies throughout the, or cities, combination of those. Some cities said, talk to the police department, some police departments said, talk to the city. So there's a breakdown of those throughout that aspect. And based on that study, on page 19, you have averages for those that have those fees and you have our recommendation, mine and his, about possible direction to go forward regulating that for the city of Stevensville. Again, I know it's, it's a lot of information, especially on today's agenda packet, which is several hundred pages to go through that. But any questions off the top there before Sergeant Moore? While they're looking at that, would you like to add anything to that about your research?
So one thing to take into consideration with this, we are not looking at trying to restrict any kind of business. We're not trying to prevent them from having free enterprise. We're looking at solely putting a cap on what they do as far as when we call them out for whether it be a rotation for an arrest, a rotation for an accident and they kept what they can charge when they're towing from private property. The TDLR has restrictions on what the max is, but the city can be more restrictive to that. Calling around to these other agencies, some of them are college campuses. They have a high population. Some of them are just like Fort Worth, Arlington and Dallas. They're large cities and they have more parking issues, more property issues going into it. So after looking at all the, the different data from these agencies, what they charge and stuff, these are just recommendations. I think that one thing that we do need to look into, maybe dig deeper into, would be the, the size of, you look at Dallas and Fort Worth, how many toes are they doing? And, you know, can they, if they're towing 5,000 vehicles in a year, can they afford to have that price be down at $60, $120 a tow? Versus us, if we only have each tow service towing 100 vehicles over the course of the year, are we going to get into their profit store? We no longer can afford to have the tow services. They are still a necessity that we need. We just need to evaluate whether or not that, that price needs to go up for the recommendations.
So speaking of that, what you just mentioned, and I was just pulling up how many, what I had presented at Public Health and Safety last time, we weren't quite through the year. So we didn't have initiated all the private property toes. We didn't have a full number of how many were towed for every month of that year. But I think it's interesting to note that for January 2023, we've had 152 private property toes. So obviously February is still ongoing. As of the 14th, we had 47. But our highest, our only month in the, in last year to go over 100 private property toes was October 103. But generally, every month was about 50. So we've gone from 50 to 150 in one year, average of a month. I mean, not average, it's about 50 average for last year, but, but we've seen 152 toes in January.
Is there a particular address, if that's the higher numbers coming from a particular address?
They're coming from apartment complexes all over the city.
All over, not, not the one that we have the problem.
Which is where the problem is, yes, sir. Based on their policies. So one thing I wanted to mention real quick is also, again, I was talking about how many tow companies and talking about our growth with Mr. McClintock. We currently have seven tow companies on our rotation and we have two more applications pending. So that would be nine tow companies, two more wanting to move in and begin work in the city of Stevensville for private property and non-consent toes. So that's, that's an issue, that's something for us to think about. Those applications are in process right now. And then also to go back to page 18 in those summaries, as, as Sergeant Moore had talked about, those are in comparison and in line with the, the others throughout the 13 agencies or those that reported that had one. It's very close in comparison to, to what the average is. As you can see, is the average private property tow versus our private tour recommendation and average drop, et cetera. You can see those compared to the top and bottom of page 19, I mean, 18, I'm sorry.
You said, Mayor, that, that like Fort Worth, because they have high volume, might charge like $60 for a tow? I read those signs when I'm over there hunting for a fireplace. I have never seen $60. It's more like 300 or something like that.
All of them have, as far, like I said, as far as the, what the TDLR says, TDLR only regulates what they can tow from private property. They're not, they're not taking into consideration any kind of rotation stuff. So each of those companies have to follow the, the private property tow rate, which according to page two, I had a lot of issues with their website because one way I'm finding the old rate, that's why I included it, because if you go to their website and you try and double-check my, my information, the TDLR's website on one page is going to wind up showing you it's 255. But when I wind up going to the Texas State Secretary's office and looking at theirs, I wind up with a fee of 272 for light-duty toes. I had to go back to TDLR and found through a different page that they actually have the old fee and the new fee, which is a recent thing. I can't tell you what the, what year it was that took place. But as far as from private property, and I know what signs you're talking about in Fort Worth and stuff, I don't know where they're coming up with those, those prices because according to TDLR, these are the maximum prices they can charge.
So let's talk about that for a second. I'll get Sergeant Moore to jump in and help me too. On our recommendation aspect of it, we're kind of a little bit all over the map with our tow companies that, what they charge. Some will charge less for different types of toes, some will charge a lot more, especially like one of the ones that generated the complaints. And so you follow where I'm going with that? Like, how do these compare to what our current tow companies do now?
Yes, sir. So just in comparison, it's not extremely light and it's not extremely heavy. The, the rates, the, the recommendations that we came up with are in line. So they're, they're still making their money. They're, they're still part of an enterprise, free enterprise. It's just saying, if you want to play ball with us, you want to be on our rotation list, you have to agree to this. What happens outside for a private citizen calling you, you can charge them what your rates are. But when I'm on the side of the road at a crash and I wind up having two vehicles and one of them's getting charged $160 for their vehicle and the other one gets charged $900, that's ridiculous. So if I can say with confidence, when I got the two people and they both say, hey, which record do you recommend? I can't recommend one. All I have is a rotation list. If you're okay with that, I'll get one. Well, what do they charge? Well, the city will come together and say, okay, yes, we're going to do this. And these tow companies say, yes, we do want to be part of the rotation list. I can with confidence tell this person, the tow rate is $160 for, from a crash. And I can also tell that person, and either one of them's getting charged anything different.
With the growth of our tow companies to potentially be nine tow companies in the city, it's an opportunity for the police department that we've been meeting and talking about resetting the bar based just alone on our city ordinance. We require a 30-minute response time to the scene and, and we've got to keep those roadways clear. We've got to move that, that debris, those cars out of the roadways. There's some things that we've got to hold them accountable for that may be based on whatever. We've, we've fallen behind a little bit on that. But we're looking at, depending on the actions that come out of this and council and what the next steps are, definitely doing a resetting of the bar, meeting with all of these individuals and say, we're going to do things different. I mean, it's very difficult for the police department to say, hey, we're going to regulate your business on how much you can make. We'll leave that to the council. But we are going to require some, some, I don't know if ethics is the right word, but some standards to be held by even possibly more than what we currently have in our city ordinance. So we've got some work to do with all of the tow companies going forward for sure, if that makes sense.
But they're not required to be on that list. If they don't want, if they want to opt out, they can opt out.
And, and how they do right now, Leon, is a lot of them just don't answer their phone. And that's how you opt out. Well, it's whatever, it's 2:00 in the morning, I don't want to do it. And it's freezing cold, ice storm. So then we have to go on to the next Jill. And that's not fair to the other companies.
So one of the, one of the companies or cities, I don't, don't remember which one it was, but they said they, it doesn't matter what size tow rate or what, what rig it is. They say, if you want, if you want to play ball, you want on our rotation list, it was, I believe it was $60. It was pretty light.
I saw that. One of them was like, it was shocking to me. I think it was Lovett. It was only.
It was challenging on the debt out of Lovett, that's for sure.
Yeah. Lovett's 90 and 250.
Oh, wait, maybe I missed. Oh, no, Waco.
Yeah, Waco, they, they did 60 for, I mean, that was.
Surprising.
It's an expensive business too. It's a lot of overhead, you know, with the, the insurance, the vehicles, that maintenance drivers, CEOs, different things like that.
And going back to, like I said, you said, they don't have to, they can still have their, their business and they can take all the calls they want from citizens on the side of the road. We are only talking about what happens to them inside city limits. So if they're out in the county and they get a call out there, if they want to change a tire on the side of the road, they can try to regulate that and all get the car. Citizen calls them in the city limits and they say, I lock my key out of my car, I want you to come and lock it. They can set their own rates. We're just trying to prevent our citizens from feeling the repercussions of these toes from private property and wrecks, non-consent, yeah, non-consent toes.
So Chief, are you making a recommendation that asks us to act? Or are you giving us information to have a later date of action?
Well, that's a good question, Mr. Mayor. We obviously have put together the work in there and, and are asking, it's, it's controversial. Phones are going to light up. It's a wonder, I mean, some of our phones have already lit up.
My phone rang twice today from tow companies.
Ours did just a few minutes ago. Also, you saw me step out a couple times.
That's why I walked in at three minutes till the meeting started.
And so we need to act, Mr. Mayor, and we need to, we need to do something because we're growing. And I'm not sure what the right word would be related to it, but some regulation needs to take place. So that's why we have included in our document what we believe. There's some other things the state said you could add that would even help you more, but we felt they would be too restrictive, response times, larger wreckers and so forth like that. But we, we are asking for some help on that, yes, sir, with those recommendations there. Yes, sir.
I appreciate you, you guys doing, putting the work in this. I know this is, it takes a lot of time. And so appreciate you, Sergeant Moore. I know this is, it takes a lot of time, and so, appreciate you, Sergeant Moore, for doing that. I think, I do think we have to be very careful to, that we don't have a perception that we're trying to put any tow, tow businesses out of business. That's, that's not what we want to do. But I do think we have, from, from the incident management standpoint. I think it's vital that, that everybody's on the same page. If, if you're the luck of the draw, then good for the tow company that they were the luck of the draw on that one. And we want to be fair, they need to be fair to, to the person who's just a victim of a crash that didn't get an option or didn't know who to call.
From out of town.
Uh, from out of town, yeah. And, and so, that regulation needs to happen, but they do have to make money. And the private property toes, I'm just, for me, it's, I, I really struggle with, they're, they're necessary. There's some parking issues around town, they're very necessary. It's a tool that those apartment complexes need. But I really struggle with a private entity being, being able to take enforcement action on someone. If, if one of your officers takes enforcement action, that citizen is entitled to due process. They get to go see a judge. The judge ultimately decides what happens with that, what that fine will be. With private property toes, there is no due process. It's, we said you were parked there against whatever that complex said their policy was, and as a result of that, we're going to charge you up to the state maximum, whatever that is. And there, that hasn't been consistent in, in what's being charged. I had a conversation just before I walked in that, from a tow company that says that, that they have been more consistent. I, I don't know if they have, but bottom line is, is they, they need to be consistent. And, and I, I would challenge our apartment complexes to be more consistent in their, in their policy setup. A policy went out today from a management company that says you have to call the towing company to get your visitor's permit. And they'll respond before 7:00 P. M. that night with a code word that you have to display in your window to keep from being towed. And my question would be, what happens if your visitor's coming after 8:00 P. M. and they didn't know they were coming?
Sir, if I could interject on that, one of our biggest concerns is designated drivers. They're not going to have the time or opportunity to pick up a visitor pass, drop off, because we, this has occurred at least once that we know of. And that their vehicle's towed while they're doing what we need them to do, getting an intoxicated person that couldn't drive home to an apartment complex, and then coming out of their vehicle being gone.
Right.
And there was no way they could get a visitor pass or even they even know that that was a requirement, and so.
Right. So, I, I, you know, I, I would agree, the recommendations on some of these do, they seem pretty low. I, I would be very hesitant to go that low, especially starting off. You know, we, we don't, don't have to start at the bottom, but maybe we can kind of, kind of get things under control. And I would like to see, I would like to see a, an ordinance that would regulate how or when those private property toes can occur when a visitor's pass is required. It's, it's, if possible.
I don't know that we can go that far.
Okay, that's, okay, that's fine.
I don't think we can do that.
Okay, okay, that's, that's fair enough. If that's not something we can do, then I guess decide that you're going to visit somebody 24 hours in advance. So.
It would be nice actually if the apartment complex would all get on the same page and agree that you have a visitor section, there is no permit required. Unless there, unless there's a complex that is necessarily so small that they don't have a section big enough for going around. And in doing some of my research, I drove around the complexes, I took pictures of the signage. There, there'd be the requirements, they have signs posted inside and out. They have sections that are designated visitor spot. It's, a lot of that stuff is there. What it comes down to is, like I said, the complexes, if they're shutting down, but yet you, you have tenants that you don't have friends of, or if I want to call someone and say, hey, come over and let's watch a movie.
Let me back up. We can't do it this way. Now, that other guy sitting down back there.
Quit hiding, Steve.
There, we may very well be able to approach it through the development services ordinances, you know, registration program or.
Through the parking.
Yeah, I mean, it's not something that can come through the P D enforcement arm, but we can probably look at that avenue on the code side. That one's going to take a hot minute. I agree with the chief on, I think we're going to need to start regulating pretty quickly, at least what we can get our hands on. You know, the, the mayor was referencing a specific one. That's actually not the highest complaint anymore. It's a whole, it's morphed into a whole other thing in other locations. So, I think we do need to ask y'all to help us get our hands around it as quick as possible. And I, I think even if you guys wanted to make a recommendation to move forward with an ordinance change, I think he can bring you, you know, take his numbers now, sit down with all the ones. Because when they register with the P D, they have to put their towing fees, they have to file a fee schedule. So, he can look at his recommendations in hard comparison to his seven that he's got on file and see where those sit. That may, these may be right in line with three or four of them. In fact, I can look at his recommendations now, and unless Paul and Alpro change a tremendous amount, I mean, that's.
They're close.
That's almost right on the money of what they're doing. And he can probably bring you some good numbers to the main meeting in March, if, if you're comfortable moving in that direction.
So, then be prepared to take action then.
We've seen an explosion of this in the last six months. We've seen those signs go up in those parking lots around the apartments, some small apartments, some larger apartments, complexes. It's the same sign up in a lot of them. And for private, private towing company. We can't, we can regulate the, the amount, I suppose, and maybe that'll help some. Because we're hearing stuff like $300 for getting towed out of an apartment complex and the problems that you've just mentioned. Is it the towing company getting paid, plus maybe the apartment complex is getting paid a little bit too for each one of these? And that's why there's such an explosion, because it's just really unusual.
I've, I've looked at, I don't think there would be any kickbacks to the apartment complexes. My understanding would that illegal.
Well, I would think it would be.
But I, I do know that I did confirm with one tow company today that has done a lot of these, that their drivers do work on commission.
Okay.
And so, again, back to, to the, the private entity, giving it, having enforcement action on someone. Our police officers are certainly prohibited by law to work on commission or have any quotas or have anything like that. And it, it's difficult, because I certainly, I don't, I don't want to put, I don't want something we do to cause someone to go out of business at all. Everyone has a right to conduct business, but that's just a, not only is there a significant financial impact to those people, but their car is also held for ransom.
Yeah.
So, it's.
It's a complaint.
It, it, but it, but it's a, it's a necessity as well, and so, it's a difficult balance.
Seems to be more of a necessity now than it was six months ago. You know, whatever.
I've had a towing sign up in my parking lot for three years. I use it for deterrent more than anything. I've never towed anybody down. I hope no one sees that and starts parking in my parking spot now.
Right down the street, Andrew.
I'd park in there when you put that sign.
It's just a deterrent, but, but I mean, I think there is a need, you know, for, for some, you know, for, you know, for, for that, especially in businesses that have limited amount of spaces. But, but yeah, I think there are a lot of people taking advantage of it, too.
We can tell the council's struggling with it. What is your recommendation?
My recommendation, if, if you're comfortable with it, would be to recommend a full council to, to modify the towing ordinance to include regulatory fees that are recommended by the police department. And then he can finalize those numbers for you.
To bring back the next council.
Bring back March 7th, and that way, if you're in agreement with those numbers that night.
Are you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
We can, we can have an amended ordinance ready to be.
But then we can also direct staff to work on city ordinances.
From the, from the development services side, look at regulating the apartment complexes and how they approach vehicles on, on property. Because that's, that's the other side of it. We can contact some of the same cities that Sergeant Moore used specifically, the college ones, and see, do you have any development services rules that go hand in hand with this also? And look at solutions for that side.
So, our committee can make a motion to accept a proposal for tow fees.
I would just make a motion that you recommend a full council to modify the towing ordinance to.
I make that motion.
Okay. So, what was that motion? So, was your motion to recommend the council to modify the towing ordinance with suggestions that, that the police department will bring at a later date?
I like the way you silver tongue devil's talk.
I, I just want to be sure, because I, I don't think I'm comfortable with taking these exact recommendations. And I want to be clear, I, I think there are probably a lot of people watching right now, and I want to be clear that have seen this, and, and I, I don't think I would be willing to go where these are, and so.
Well, another thing that I think we need to be sure, and maybe I'm misunderstanding this, that we're not telling them what they can charge every other time. We're telling them what they can charge when they have something to do with the police department. Right.
All non-consent toes. Now, if you call them and say.
Right. That's what I'm saying, is that, yes.
Right. But if it's for the police department or it's for violating somebody's no parking sign, then that's what you're regulating.
And we're only talking about, and we're only talking about the fee to hook up and tow away. We're not talking about winch fees, impound fees, storage fees, any of the, if, if they, if they require two wreckers to come in, or they require more manpower or cleanup and all of that. We're not talking about any of that. Okay, I'll second your motion, Bob.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, you're going to recommend that to full council in now 7? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate you, Sergeant. With no other items on the agenda, the city council committee meeting will adjourn, and we are now at 8:20, and I'll call a city council special council meeting together. And in doing so, I have to, we're going to executive session, applying for the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Law, Subchapter D, Government Code, Verin's Texas Code, annotated in accordance with Section 551.072. Deliver any real property. I just have to say them all, Randy?
Yes.
Okay, they're all the same. Delivering real property to deliberate per, do you want?
All the same section, yes.
It's all the same section? So, I have to read them all?
No.
Oh, okay, thank you. We're going to stand, we're going to go into executive session. We will be back. We will be back.
Yes, sir, Mr. Schmerer. I make the motion that we move into a cell of real property discussed in executive session, Ordinance Number 2022-0-09.
Second.
And motion second. Should all say aye?
Aye.
As I thought motion passes.
Schmerer, I make a motion that we move forward to cell of real property discussed in executive session, Ordinance Number 2022-0-10.
Second.
And motion second. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Schmerer, I make the motion that we move to move into cell of real property discussed in executive session, Ordinance Number 2022-0-12.
Second.
And motion second. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. It is eight fifty-one. We will stand adjourned.
I know you live on the opposite side too.